Good evening, everyone. It's Monday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, in time for the regularly scheduled city council meeting. As you heard, certified meeting notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code seven four dash two zero four.
For color.
Councilmember Heller.
Present.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you. Stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Next items, changes to the agenda. None from staff. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I propose to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agendas. Are any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, item F one, quarterly financial statements. This is an information item, council. It's in your packet. If you have questions, feel free to talk to the clerk, or if you have something you want to discuss publicly, this is the time. Okay. We'll move right down to item G one. Ordinance's resolutions, contracts. These are action items. Item G one is a public hearing on CPA FY two thousand and twenty-two dash zero 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 six. Ordinance ten thirty-four dash twenty-two. This is the item I suspect most of you are here for. And this is a proposed change to our parking regulations. Before we get started, we have a number of folks online. If you are joining us via Zoom and intend to testify, if you would use the raise your hand tool in Zoom so that the clerk can get your name. And we can add you to the list of those that wish to testify. While that's going on, just let you know what we intend to do and accomplish tonight. This item has garnered a lot of attention. We've had a lot of public input on this item. Tonight's an opportunity to begin the public discussion. The council's here to listen to testimony and to ask questions if they have any of those giving testimony. It's my intention, with council's permission, to hold the hearing open until the twenty-seventh. At which time we can, if we need to consider new information. We've had some late submittals. We have a deadline of the Wednesday before the Monday meeting to have everything in the packet that the council needs to review, giving them time to adequately review materials before the Monday meeting. So items that come in after the Wednesday deadline aren't available for them really to make, use as part of the decision-making process. So submittals on this item that came in after Wednesday will become official components of the packet that will be forwarded and dealt with at the February twenty-seventh council meeting. Okay. Jenna. Before we get into the hearing procedures, Lisa, do you, can you tell if we have people online that need to sign up?
At this time, Mr. Mayor, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. Ms. Thornborough, would you review the hearing procedures?
And mayor and members of the council, good evening, and thank you to Mayor Evans for introducing this item. The hearing procedures that are adopted by the city, they start out with a presentation from the applicant, from the applicant. As the city is the applicant, the staff report that usually follows and, and the presentation will be combined into just one staff report. After that is done, then public testimony will be heard. As the mayor had already noted, some of the procedures regarding public testimony, please do wait until your name is called. If you haven't signed up, please do sign up over at the table. And once the mayor calls your name, please come up and speak into this microphone.
We're, we're going to use the center when this.
Or excuse me, the center microphone. So please come to the center and state your name and address for the record. For those of you who may end up choosing to testify via Zoom, please also make sure that your name is spelled completely, or you spell your name for the record. There's a three-minute limit for testimony. And testimony should directly address the subject matter at hand. The city does ask that it not be repetitious or be derogatory. If you do agree with testimony, we do hear individuals stand up and note that they agree with testimony that's been previously provided. Once the testimony is completed, staff will come before the council to address any questions or provide any rebuttal. And then the council may or may not close the hearing and discuss and decide the matter at hand. And there's been quite a process getting to here tonight. The cities provided a parking strategy review with different review, different strategies that could be employed to address parking within Garden City. There was a parking reception survey that was conducted citywide. And then three regulatory directions were presented, repeal option, a consistent approach, and a use-by-use approach. And an open house and, and public meetings were attended by some individuals in the, the, the public. And that, those reviews are their comments were incorporated and utilized to hone in an ordinance approach. There's also been multiple reviews with the design review consultants. The Planning and Zoning Commission had two work sessions. This board has also had work sessions. The Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation, and tonight we're at another public hearing in front of the city council. This is a laundry list of changes that are included within the proposed ordinance. At the last city council meeting, there was a work session that walked through what these changes are. And so for deference of time tonight, I'm going to just hit the highlights. And one of the, the first highlight is that dimensional standards have been added, and I think I might be presentation. Dimensional standards have been added to the code. And just for reference, the city, well, and a large number of codes were reviewed in drafting this proposal. The city does tend to look towards its neighbor, the city of Boise, to identify what they're doing. Their proposed ordinance changes have very similar, but at times larger space standards, and they allow for forty percent of their parking to be compact, whereas this draft ordinance suggests fifty percent. And the number of required residential parking has been suggested to be reduced for two-bedroom units to require just one space. Currently, there is a requirement for two spaces per two-bedroom units. And residential guest parking spaces.
Yes.
I apologize for interrupting. Can we close the door?
That, that. We can't. It's an open hearing. But we'll tell them and maybe ask them to move to another location out there.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. And the residential guest parking spaces currently are at point five for every unit. And this draft proposal looks, suggests that the point five being applied only to the first ten units. And then after the first ten units, there would be point one or one space for every ten units. The number of parking for non-residential uses in current code, it's left to the applicant to provide an analysis of their needs. This proposal is broken into four categories, high, medium, low, and negligible parking needs. With four uses that are further refined. And the number of parking stalls would be required on a gross, a gross square foot calculation of the space dedicated to the use. Bicycle parking requirements have been increased. Current codes section that standards for alternatives to onsite parking has been amended to be called equivalent parking adjustments, and criteria has been added. And because so much of Garden City is re, already built out, there are a lot of non-residential uses that are already existing. And so an allowance for fifty percent of the parking stall requirements for existing structures has been added. Loading facilities are no longer man, mandatory. However, should somebody provide a loading facility, there are still provisions for what those designs standards should be. There's an addition of a parking benefit district enabling criteria. So at this point in time, there is no parking benefit district. Should the city in the future choose to implement a parking benefit district, a new code rewrite would need to be there, the same process that we're going through tonight with a code amendment would come through the city and the boundaries of that benefit district would be established, as well as the rules and regulations for what that may look like. For the benefit of the public, I know that the city council has already had a work session and, and gone through what that might be. A parking benefit district is essentially establishing boundaries of a portion of the city that may have different requirements. And those different requirements could also include things such as parking permits, metered parking, et cetera. And then those funds could be utilized to administer the parking district. And any funds in addition to the, the operations then could be invested back into infrastructure that could be utilized to keep enhancing the walkability, bikeability, additional public parking spaces, et cetera, within that district. And then there's an allowance of a parking facility with a conditional use in the R three zoning district that's been added to table eight two B one, which is identifying all of the uses within the city. During the work session on January twenty-third, the last meeting, the council did not deliberate this matter, but did make some comments. And one of the comments was regarding to the lack of adequate transit system within the region, which necessitates parking to accommodate the transportation needs. And then there were some concerns with the electric vehicle parking spaces being flexible and the enforcement of the parking thereof. And then there, there is a request to define travel trailer. And a note that the term only and the proposed ordinance eight forty-six B one as precluding other methods of reductions that are identified in code. So since the work session that was held a couple of weeks ago, there have been additional updates to the, the proposed recommended code. The term travel trailer was amended to recreational vehicle, which is already defined in code. And there, the recommendation that came through from the Planning and Zoning Commission had had public testimony to re, remove requiring current registration for vehicles that are inoperable. And or otherwise have those vehicles either in an enclosed or concealed area of the property. This was not amended because the, the testimony had indicated that would require the city going onsite. However, proof of registration could certainly be requested without going onsite. And table eight forty-two is the table regarding residential space requirements. There had been public testimony that was in conflict where one had asked for additional spaces to be required of residential uses and, and other testimony had been requesting a further reduction in the required spaces. And so that was left as drafted, as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then to address the, the public concern with bicycle parking, the request that it bicycle parking be permitted within five hundred feet. Staff did not make changes to the staff's three hundred-foot suggestion in that most properties within Garden City actually aren't five hundred feet in total. And then the electric vehicle spaces due to the concern of enforcement and flexibility. Those are no longer required spaces. However, it's been redrafted that they may be provided and count toward the required spaces, and that shifted the location of where the EV code is located and as, as well as the definitions, reducing and combining the definitions. And the word only was stricken, stricken in eight forty-six B one. And then one item that was not discussed at the, the work session was that if no use is specified, then the calculation criteria would utilize the, the high-needs parking category for a new structure. And there have been additional comments provided, and those are linked to the packet, as well as late comments that have been received as late as this afternoon. As the mayor noted, they will be provided to the council. I think most of them are already up on the web, and so they can be included in the, the, the future deliberations of this body. To remind the council that there have been two bodies that made formal recommendations. Or the Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation on this ordinance with a three-two vote. The, there were discussions amongst the Planning and Zoning Commission noting that on-street parking is a free public good and without minimums, it pushes private needs to the public system. And then the naivotes were in favor of repealing the required spaces. And some of those reasons that they noted were housing affordability, efficient and effective land use, increase of tax revenue without impacting the ratepayers, and a movement elsewhere with other cities that have been repealing or reducing parking requirements. And the design review consultants also, this ordinance incorporates their recommendations. And it was noted that one of the consultants, even though he provided all of, all of his comments to try to provide the best ordinance possible, would be in favor of a repeal. And potential actions tonight for the council would be to sustain the planning and zoning commission's recommendation, modify the recommendation, or reject the recommendation. The council, certainly if there are significant modifications, could continue the hearing if need be. The council may or may not have the first reading of the ordinance tonight, if the council gets there, and there may be three readings of the ordinance possible. If there are three readings, it's recommended that the decision is continued to a date certain, so that the decision of this application would coincide with the third reading. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Thornborough, council?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As a point of clarification, I, having read through volumes of communication, I do think the clarification would be appropriate. There was some speculation that potentially this, this proposal was being administered or pushed through the council ahead of other highly visible proposals. And I, I think it'd be appropriate to clarify that the timing is coincidental and not precarious in any way, shape, or form.
Okay, thank you. I think you just said it.
Thank you.
Okay. We will open the public hearing here in just a moment. We have a number of folks online. Again, if you intend to testify, please raise your hand so we can get you on the list. Okay, I will get a Collins gathering the paperwork for me. Okay. Okay, we have a number of folks here to testify. We will, I'll be your timekeeper. And we will start with this is coincidental, Mr. May. If you're ready. Okay, we can give you, we can give you a few minutes. Okay. Sharon Ellis. Okay, well, let me get, let me get the five. Don May, Sharon Ellis. One forty East Forty-first, there's no name on it. Maybe Harry something? Oh, are you going to testify? You are? Okay. Hey, let me get Harry's name on here. And the last name is it G R A B E? Okay. Hope you're ready, Mr. May.
Want to plug in here or over here?
You have something to plug in, so plug in over there. Lisa will help you, and then.
I'm sorry, I had the wrong thing.
Pardon me?
I'm so sorry.
Okay. Well, we're going to get, we're going to get her down. Don't worry about it. Sharon Ellis. You want to go after him? Okay, okay. So we're going to have May, Ellis. Is it Gravy? Gravy? I usually don't get those right, so that was something I'll remember. Livingston? That one of the five? Are you with this group? You're, you're separate. Okay. Welcome, Mr. Livingston. If you would, give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Evans, and thank you, city council members, for your service, allowing me to be here tonight. My name is John Livingston. And I represent a group called Preserve Plantation Twenty-Three's. It is very much interested in the, the change of code this morning tonight. We are opposed to the S H E application pending for the city father for the next sixteen days. And this is part of the, what goes into the, the we feel to be a plan to change the way the interval and much of twenty-two point five acres of plantation.
Mr. Mayor, can I get a point of order?
With this change in code.
I, I won't penalize your time. Yes, Mr. Waddams.
I just want to make.
I had to say that I'm having someone here and.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll speak up. Is that better? Okay, Mr. Waddams.
Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Livingston. I want to make sure we're real clear. We weren't noticed up tonight for any public testimony regarding that application. So I don't think the council should be listening to any testimony about that application. That's going to get us into open.
Okay. The plantation application is a separate application from this parking. Okay, so when you're bringing in testimony regarding an application that's in the pipeline but hasn't been heard, that's not properly before the council. Okay, if, if you can confine your comments to the parking issue.
As a member of the plantation, we, we are concerned that this increased density in the parking that will cause overflow into our neighborhood is going to severely impact the lifestyle of the people living in the plantation. As a representative of the Preserve Plantation that has over a hundred homeowners and many more other people from outside the community, we believe that changing this parking code is not a good idea. We would recommend either tailing it for now. And again, I'm not going to mention the application, but tailing it to other businesses before the city is completed. This would allow the city fathers to make a more prudent and tempered decision regarding this increased density. So thank you for your time. I'm sorry if I couldn't hear you. I'll stand before any, for any question.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Livingston. I do have a question. Can you?
Yeah, speak, speak. Put your mouth right up to the.
My question is this. You said you represent a group of people, and I heard the number one hundred. Is there one hundred homes, one hundred people?
Fifty-six homes in our neighborhood. We have a hundred neighbors, over a hundred neighbors that have signed up. We had a signup page yesterday that's concluded more. Our legal counsel is Mr. David Leroy, and that's as much as I can give you about.
I understand. Here's my question. And this representation, does everyone that you represent feel the way you just conveyed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
In fact, there's more to feel the way that we do, but they're afraid to come forward.
That sparks another question.
It's, it's, it's all right. I'll use you to cover me if I don't hear something, so.
Mr. Mayor, I have a follow-up question.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Livingston, why are people afraid to come forward and testify?
There's being pressure. There's being pressure put on them by representatives of the developer. Mr. Taunton and Lincoln Incorporated do not come, and agents of that organization do not come forward.
With relationship to parking?
I'm sorry?
As it relates to parking? Parking only. Is there pressure?
I'm, I'm against, apologize. This, this has implications for the parking situation in our neighborhood. It says that there was a slide put up by the city planner that showed the density of the parking. Do you ever mention overflow into the neighborhood?
Thank you.
That's the concern we have.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any further questions of Mr. Livingston? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Livingston.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask for clarification from President of the Council? So is your interpretation, I believe I heard. The, the Mr. Livingston is representing a hundred households. Is that your interpretation?
I interpreted that to be the case.
Thank you.
Okay, next I have Megan. She's with you, let me get your stack there. How about Deb Riedel, Riedel? You help me with the pronunciation.
I also am a member of the plantation neighborhood. And we are just concerned about the whole market. As State Street was built out and we have thousands and thousands of apartments that we're all on, State Street that we already bought. If there isn't that equipped parking, you can learn these type of cars, they are going to park somewhere. And our neighborhood is supposed to run with each car. And when I was listening to you and I, I heard a car alarm going off. And I thought, how's that gonna be if we have cars parked down our street? And somebody's alarm is going off. And we don't have a alarm, we have a car alarm, so where they live. So I think that parking is learned is just the density. That we're experiencing all over our entire town, it's not just Garden City, it's Boise, and I know a lot of the businesses in downtown Boise. Because of the young, the young partners and condos. So I would just ask that we carefully consider this and, and I know you will. And maybe think. About deferring this decision until I can come testimony to some of the.
Thank you. Any questions, Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Riedel. Is it Riedel? Riedel, I apologize. You referenced businesses that are concerned about parking. Can you give any specific instances?
And they weren't even aware of. This old, this old occupation. But people will park somewhere and as we get a widen State Street, it goes seven lanes and it has a bus lane and it has all the white lanes and all the stuff we're supposed to have. People are still going to have cars if their roommates. It's not realistic to think that people are only going to have one car. I've been, the vision that I have is people running across State Street to get to their cars, if they're part of the business across State Street. Or running across the, of course, to get to our neighborhood. Those are my concerns. And I don't think that helps the people living in my density or the people in the back who live over there. So I would just ask that you please take those things into consideration.
Any other questions, Council? Great, thank, thank you so much for coming, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would you mind requiring the addresses to be stated and written?
She didn't give her address?
I did not.
Okay, it's sixty-five seventy West Plantation Lane. John Frazier. You're with them. How about, how about Francis Fallon? Okay. How about? Louis Landry.
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Council, thank you. I don't have, and I think I don't have the ability. To comment on, is this the right amount of space for the bicycles? Or is it one point five or point five? I've been bewildered at times, being of the millions and peers. I think maybe where I could see if I can get my head straight and get some clarity. What I've heard over and over again is we have a comprehensive plan. However. If it's not moved into municipal code. You can't be using that for a review of specific applications. For turning them down or supporting. So for me, this issue is very much tied to the comprehensive plan. So I went back and I looked at the comprehensive plan, I think of two thousand and six. That adopted July the twenty-fourth. There were nineteen steering committee members. From the community, so we have people writing letters in now, but. There was a lot of input and a lot of thinking. Usually these have been two-hour meetings that I looked at the comprehensive plans. Update from two thousand and nineteen and we had nine meetings. So in that original plan, the only ones still here, Mr. Mayor, thank you, still here. You show amazing stamina of this. And then Jenna was here at the plant. You want the directory, achievement. Other than that, I know a few of these individuals who are now deceased. A few of them who just aren't involved in either as a member of the council, etc. Some of them did appear again. For example, Rich Childress came back and worked on the other steering committee, if you will. So that's the two thousand and nineteen version. And there were eight members of the working group. Mr. Mayor, you were a recipient of that plan at that time. And there were no members of this council on it. The only member of the council at the time was Pam Beaumont. Who served on the steering committee and she had been back then in two thousand and six. What I'm pointing out, long story short, there's been some problems and cuts in the. I mean, some of that is life moves, but it helps sometimes if there's some problems. I didn't see with two thousand and six. But I sure did participate in that two thousand and nineteen. And then meeting after meeting and saying, well, the comprehensive plan really doesn't apply here because it wasn't translated. So here's the issue.
We're, we're, we're at time, so wrap it up if you can, Mr. Landry, thank you.
I suggest that the review of this. Parking be subjected to your, because you're the only ones who can. Operationalize the comprehensive plan into code. I know that the comprehensive plan is a law. And people can see it in various ways. But can you, and then can you explain to us? In terms of your decision, how did you use the comprehensive plan to affect your decision?
Right, thank, thank you, Mr. Landry. Questions of Mr. Landry?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Landry, do you have a particular? Section of the comprehensive plan that you can point to specifically?
Example, if we're doing increased density. And we're gonna say, we have to leave cars and because they have. Public transportation, the plan does increase. Public transportation as it went down the arterial of State Street. And Chinon, the issue is when we're three blocks away or four blocks away. From, for example, Chinon, as we look at one area is deeply affected by high density. If you have a month. Of a hundred degree heat, day in and day out, relaxed street trees. Who is walking, who's capable to make it the three blocks? To the, to the public transportation? The public transportation plan has got to tie in to amenable sidewalks, to a greenbelt. And to where you're placing density. So if you're in mixed use and you can set up a sixteen-story building. With all that implied. And you're expecting people to get to the public transportation three and four blocks away. Then I just think you have an issue with your density, your height requirements. And how that might be tailored to have closer to. Closer to the main arteries that we have today. And not have it backed up against the river from three or four blocks away, so I think. The issues of where you're at with height. Where you're at with sidewalks and trees, where you're at with pedestrian friendly, where you're at with protecting the greenbelt. If you don't protect the greenbelt and you have it as a row of high, multi-story buildings. And we lose the shade factor, all of those things come into play. Are we gonna need our cars? Absolutely, it's a living. Or can we walk in a reasonable way? I would like the more walkable, friendly, bicycle-friendly community. I don't see the planning coming together to make that possible.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Any further questions, Council? Thank you, sir. Hannah Ball? Yes, just. Be cozy with the mic if you would. Okay.
And I took my notes from the perspective of the East End of our town, so the original town site. It's everything I considered, Glenn Woodpeas. I, I didn't evaluate this through the lens of what the effects on plantation and some of the other. Developed communities would be, so with that, I apologize. So really, a topic of commercial real estate, I consider myself an expert in that field. And I have had the pleasure of hosting over twenty neighborhood meetings. Throughout my, my, as a developer in East End. I understand that business owners understand what components they need to properly manage their business. I understand that commercial businesses often understand commercial equipment they need. What materials, what POS systems? And equally, I believe that they understand what parking calculations they need to be successful. We have businesses like Pushing For and the Rebuild Market, Captain Richanis. That were created with no parking whatsoever. And they have been successful and thriving in our garden city community. So if a parking count was required, many of the businesses that we've seen from our community are East End previously. Would not be allowed. And the problem when I evaluated this code with the lots in East End. Is mostly it's a size layout. The original townsides with lots are very small. And they're often very difficult to fit all the components without having large podium construction. So in order to encourage these small local businesses that are often startup, coming to our communities and making us. Kind of what we are today, the wineries and the breweries and the, the local flair of food and beverage establishments. We need a lot more flexibility than this code currently has. We don't have a traditional downtown like downtown Boise, our commercial is spread throughout the land, Woodpeas. With that, there isn't, it's hard to establish what a good parking or commercial district could be. Versus the needs of plantation, I think they're two different components. That a parking district overlay needs to be determined immediately, so to reduce conflict in that area. Also, the original town site, as I mentioned, it's commercially zoned. It has been for our history and hopefully will be for our history. And so any residents that are negatively impacted due to our commercial businesses, they go their homes and have commercially held plans. And they need to respect the fact that that commercial zoning was there prior to the addition.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Hannah, we're not quite through with you. Thank you, Council.
Ms. Ball, thank you for the time tonight, insightful as always. I, I, I just would ask, can you give an opinion on the proposal of, of. So I know that your focus today and what I heard in your testimony was about commercial and commercial. Sort of being first, residential being second to the, to the space. But I am curious what, because of the insight you have, what your feelings are about the adequacy. As proposed of commercial, of residential parking.
So thank you, County Member Page. As you all know, you've seen with that P U D application. In the R three, the guest parking was always asked for a reduction. For the last three years, every single application that came in asked for reduction of the two point five guest parking spaces. In both R three and C two, that occurs in the last three years in application because they could not fit it. And of course, they would say because it's not needed or because I could use street parking. They would give exception as to why, simply because they cannot fit them on the, on the lots. So regarding their residential component. Again, I think it needs to be carefully considered by depending on where you are. Developing in, again, East End versus plantation, I think they have two completely different parking needs. I think we need to evaluate that through the lens of, is it currently built out? Or is it how we developing area? So that's something to consider, you know, we, do we have high limits in C two? You know, so we're seeing larger buildings, I think we should look at, you know, where, again, I've always said, and Jen has always been a great mentor. Said, we really need to look at form-based planning. Whatever we want to see as a state, let's steer code to that. To this point, we have this comprehensive plan that when we all read it, we get really inspired. We wanted to see more active development area. Now we're quickly saying, you know, we need to change our parking so dramatically. I, I really only analyze it through the commercial lens and I do think it'll be a huge detriment. And I think we'll stop attracting the businesses that are really gaining momentum and picking up the food and beverages industry further. I think after this, we're gonna start seeing a lot of variance. And a lot of exceptions to policy now from the residential side, but from that promotion side. I think we're gonna start and learn from it.
Mr. Mayor, one, one more follow-up. Are, are you in favor of a parking district?
You know, I think it would be intriguing when we said, could there be an app that could connect the overlay quickly? So that patrons could log on to the app and then it could be an additional source of revenue for the city. I like that too, I like that for the additional source of revenue, but I also like to see that we can collect data. That's the most important thing, is looking at space like very door screen saying, we already know how many patrons we get. How much revenue are we collecting? And then what's the speed that we need to be building out our infrastructure for future connectivity? Or I think that'll help us step down, like will help us shape the next comprehensive plan. What, what improvements do we need to see in the future, how many more auto planes and transit? I think you can look at that through the lens of this parking app overlay, I had heard of that. I thought it was something really interesting.
One last question about that. Could people who are struggling to afford housing? Pay additional money just to park?
That's an interesting question. So. Here's mine, here's my. If I'm a developer and I'm not to build two point five parking space for your home. I'm not gonna build two point five in garage and make it house six hundred square feet. Not gonna work, it's not gonna pencil, it's not gonna be equal to the market. I'm gonna do seventeen hundred square feet to account for three two, two point five garage space. I have this theory, whatever talking to carports. You know, carports, you can have a cover, they used to be nice, get you a lot of kind of stuff for it in them. Nowadays, we don't really have carports anymore. And I think that, you know, a simple portable product that would be attractive and have a space to park. Could be something like a seven hundred square foot home with a carport. I think that's attractive for so many young drivers. We don't, we don't see that product coming in because codes don't allow that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Hannah, thank you, quick question, so you.
Hannah, thank you. Quick question. So you, I just wanna make sure I understood right. So what you would liken the code ideally is flexibility and subjectivity, um, development by development or project by project?
Absolutely. I think that's the goal. Um, Jenna has talked about form-based planning. And what that also does is it allows the conflict to stop. And then members like City Council to evaluate this on what are, what are the benefits that we're going to have?
So my, I think my question is this. So you like flexibility and subjectivity in the code, project by project? And we kind of had that before and we pursued, which led to us not being able to have a subject or flexible code because some people don't like that subjectivity to make decisions like that. So now we're having to come up with something that's objective. So then really the balance is then, in my mind, is how do we balance the needs of the development community along with the needs of residences like that plantation to come up with something that works for everybody? But having flexibility and subjectivity is something we kind of had. And it, it didn't work, right? Someone sued us. And now we're having to be objective. So my question is, how do we get around that, right?
Hey, great, great theory. Um, I absolutely think anybody who wants to talk manner and guess pretty on form-based code. And form-based code isn't being subjective. Being subjective is ultimately what, what leads to a lawsuit. It's, it being, it's saying, we don't trust the code, these are the goals we want the development to have. However you accomplish our goals, we're happy to enter seeing that. And again, it's just adding more goals and looking at that lens. The lawsuit really occurred because there was a, there was a denial based on subjective standard. Form-based says, let's do a wage standard and let's not develop as a comprehensive goals.
And so what if, I just, could you foresee where there was not an agreement on those goals that had been published that would leave another lawsuit?
The goal there is simple, and that's, that's ultimately for the, for the city to decide what are your biggest goals? Are we transit? Are we affordability? Are we eco? Are we reducing conflict? What are the goals of the city from the, the development side? What are, what are the things that you yourself want to see most? Is it weight conflict? Is it affordability? Is it, uh...
How, how would you see that as it relates specifically to parking?
I, I know for a fact that one car garage costs twenty-five thousand dollars. An additional parking space costs fifteen thousand dollars, not, not to mention the cost of land. So on a two-car garage, plus the still over space, I mean, nineteen thousand dollars for just parking.
Right. So how do you balance that with putting cars on the street and creating congestion? Which would be a goal that we wouldn't want either. So that's where I'm, you know, that's what we're trying to balance, right? So, I mean, I'm...
Absolutely. The idea of districts comes, comes in, right? Because you will ultimately...
So that might be a potential solution.
Absolutely. And then again, you can test cases in your, in your most urban areas, right? I think that's always the goal. We test them out, we're developing them quickly. For people who are a little bit less impacted by developments, mostly your commercial loans. Down in Boise, I've sort of commercial loan releasing no parking, except for the business owners, except for the buildings themselves. No parking in certain districts because they already know that's the least impacted.
So do you, do you feel that we could have an overlay district for the water district as we speak today? And then leave code as it exists for the rest of the city?
I absolutely think that's a positive start. I think that the original town site, uh, again, when, east, sounds a good start. Or let's go ahead and see how that works. Let's collect that data. And then let's pair it up to the next common plan session. Everybody really works on their, on their common plan. But I think gathering that data before the next one is gonna be very, very...
So that would be something you'd be supportive of if we decided to go down. All right.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thanks so much.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I get another point of order real quick, just regarding the microphone? Uh, I'm being told, uh, from people that are on Zoom, they're having a hard time hearing the testimony. So I've asked IT if they could crank up the microphone at the podium, but also if everybody could speak loud and clear, so the remote viewers could hear everything.
Again, get your mouth close to the microphone. Mr. Mayor, are you ready? Okay.
This goes in here, and then I just need the cord that goes into the, to the display now.
Okay, let's see.
Yes.
Yeah, we generally have flash drives rather than...
Yep. You have a flash drive?
I mean, people...
Mr. Mayor, is the material we're about to see part of the packet?
I don't know.
It's, it's on the internet.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, is the material we're about to see part of the packet?
Uh, it's the one that I sent you earlier. With your request, we were gonna tag-team the presentation with your permission.
Well, I, I understand, but you missed the submittal deadline.
But I thought that individuals didn't have to have their individual presentation approved, that three-minute. That's why I asked it.
So you intend to break that up into...
Yes, that's what we've broken it up into, five sections.
Just for, Mr. Mayor, if I may. The, the reason that there's a deadline is not to limit public input. It really isn't. It's because we spend considerable time as council members being prepared for this meeting. And when we can see things in advance, we can contemplate its meaning. We're prepared with questions that are meaningful questions. Um, something like what I assume you're about to present. Um, I would want some, some time to digest it. So it's, I, I feel like a lot of times people think that the, the deadlines are sort of arbitrary or, or even, you know, something that, that can be fudged on. And, and it just really puts us in a position where we don't, we're not able to give it the same level of...
I'm not trying to, to go against your rules at all by the...
And I'm not saying that. I'm just trying to express to the public why it's important that we have these in a timely manner. Be, because I spent a lot of time in this packet this weekend. And I would have loved to have seen what you're about to present, so I could digest it.
So I guess my question is, do, do individuals with three-minute PowerPoint presentations have to have them vetted ahead of that five-day deadline? That's the question.
Technically, no.
So that's why I'm trying to move forward with...
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you... I, I sent the presentation to you guys. Can you pull that off?
And is it on the website already?
Pardon me?
Are you sending us one presentation or an email for each three minutes?
I sent you one presentation.
Yeah.
Council, we can't refer to that in our packet because it isn't in our packet. So, uh, you'll just have to watch the screen.
So do, are we gonna have a copy of it?
I, I don't want you referring to something that's not in the package. You can refer to it on the screen, just like the testimony we've been hearing so far.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think the question is, if we hold this open until the twenty-seventh, would it be more appropriate to review it at that time?
Well, that's up to, that's up to Mr. Mayor. Uh, it's gonna be... Uh, you're gonna be asked to absorb fifty-three slides in, in fifteen minutes. And, um, that's, that's what they'd like to do, then that's what they can do.
It's just that I've got everyone here tonight. It's difficult to gather everyone in person.
It, it's, it's, it's fine, Mr. Mayor. You can... You have, you, you have your three minutes and, uh, the next person will have their three and we'll just do that.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Another point of clarity, I assume that you will want us to hold our questions until you've completed the, the whole rotations presenter?
Then I've gotta recall people. I don't know. Well, I think if we, if the council decides to hold the hearing open and you have substantive questions, I guess we can do it then. I don't know. Up to you.
What's the preference of the council?
President of the council, uh, in consideration of the time element here, uh, my preference would be hold all questions until we get through the presentation and then determine if we need to recall any of the presenters.
Bill?
Agreed.
Okay.
She's gonna, she's trying to grab the presentation. Jen is trying to grab it.
Oh, okay.
Somebody else wants to talk.
And, Mr. Mayor, while we're waiting, point of order, don't the rules say that if Mr. Mayor wanted to be the representative of a group, he could get fifteen minutes? It's only individuals that are limited to three?
It's individuals that are limited to three, but, uh, Mr. Mayor represented to me that he was representing a group, but I never heard from any of the group. I haven't been able to, uh, I don't have any information that he's an authorized agent for, for a group that exists. So that's, that was my correspondence with him today.
I mean, I see matching T-shirts. Is this your group, Mr. Mayor? I'm being serious. I mean, are, are you, you represent this entire group? And, and no one intends to speak contrary to what you're about to say?
No, I said it's just, uh, five.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you. That's a group? Five is a group?
Yeah, I, to, to Mayor, if I'm, I did not provide him...
We're, we're having a lot of discussion that's not on the record, so, um, um, it isn't that I was opposed, Councilmember Page, it's just that if someone's gonna represent, they're representing somebody else. But the somebody else hasn't represented to me that they're being represented, then I'm, I'm, I'm hesitant to go down that, uh, that... You can sign, you can sign up and testify when it's, when it's your turn. So...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In light of this confusion, can we move Mr. Mayor and his group to, uh, be the final?
Sure.
Testimony?
I think that's good because we're still waiting. Let's move on, um... Robert Clough. Welcome, Mr. Clough. If you would, give us your name and address for the record. And pull that microphone up and, and pretend like I'm a little further away. Perfect.
Uh, my name's Robert Clough. I live at eight four oh five West Marigold, the big old farmhouse right on Marigold. I own eighty-four oh one and eighty-four oh three in West Marigold. Uh, we live in a, we live in a subdivision over here. I just, I pulled up a few facts on the rental cost of, of property. This is Boise. Three-bedroom home, sixteen hundred, thirty-eight dollar apartment per month. Two bedrooms, fifteen hundred. One bedroom, twelve eighty-three. Annual income of an individual is thirty-three thousand five forty-eight. Family sixty-three, seven seventy-eight. The problem we have here is that residential housing, right over here on North Brook in Marigold, has turned into rentals. In order for them to afford that, they're having three separate families, they're three separate couples. This creates, at my place on Marigold, approximately sixty-seven houses per rental. It's all street parking because the garages are full of furniture from all these people. And this create, this creates so much on-street parking I have. They also have commercial vehicles that they bring home at times. And then I also look at the, so this is a constant battle, myself and my neighbors. It's friendly, but I'm going parking your place, parking your buildings. But they, they can't because they have so much other stuff. The other problem I see is like this coffee street, uh, apartments, timeshares and all that kind of stuff. Any one morning you go up Coffee Street, which is an undeveloped kind of a dirt trail road. We have fifteen to eighteen cars parked on that road, it'd be nice because we have timeshare people living in there. We have the rentals living there. And that just has created a very small place where we can't park, park or park on both sides of the road. We can have the same bottom of here and strawberry one. Strawberry Glen, you know, they're counting one of the parking spots as one of their stories. You know, they're saying, well, they can park in there, the corners and that kind of stuff. And that's gonna create this same bottom of here and strawberry one, which is just a small two, two-length road, okay? I, I definitely think this is a developer. Then we deal with issues of, you can jam more properties funded online and continue with these outrageous rental problems. People simply can't afford to live in these houses. And so they have to have three, two to three families in each one of those to make this work. And, you know, again, if we want to develop, we also have to be a lot more comprehensive.
Hey. Thank you, Mr. Clough. Questions, Mr. Clough?
One question. So are you advocating free and stricter parking restrictions or, or keeping what we have, or...
I, I would say we need, you know, especially over here in the three-bedroom apartments, we need three advised spaces for each one of those apartments to keep these people out of strawberry one and coming in our neighborhood over across the street, which is now, you know, people can't park down in their subdivisions down here off of Marigold, North Brook and all that kind of stuff. It completely gets full and they come over the park in the street, park there along with all the extra vehicles we have in that neighborhood. So I'd say we need more, you must, you know, brother and less.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just speaking of the cost of housing, you know, there, there, one family is not living one of these apartments. There's two, three families, many of these places that, you know, that the anyone's can't spread. So I'm not seeing that, that's the issue here.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Um, Mr. Clough, are, are you stating, I wanna make sure I understand this, um, your property's on Marigold?
Yes, it's right on there.
So is overflow parking on Marigold or are you...
No, I, I, I live that one. So all the, the electric parking is on Brook. And so all the people that live on Brook, the parking of my company, which gives me no electric. Last night in the supermarket, you know, we had five or six friends over, they had no place to park, you know? We had, we had to park them on our back lot, our flag lot, just to, just, just for a place to park. You know, because these people leave their vehicles there for extended period of time. And they, you know, they, they don't move. And, and I'm trying to work with them, but, you know, there's this ever-rotating group of families that move through these houses. There's one person there that's kind of the cement group. But, you know, for the most part, everybody else goes in and out. And, you know, they, they've got car rental property. But it, it is very frustrating when you have, you know, four to five vehicles parked out next to your house and you don't have people, you know, places to move in all, friends and family. And if, with the media made up this rental property, they can't, you know, there's nobody who can store that. Just by, you know, what, a thirty, even sixty thousand, you can't, you know, to literally just buy yourself.
Mi, Mr. Clough, are you witnessing or experiencing overflow parking on both the north and south side?
Yeah, oh, it's, it's...
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So, Mr. Clough, I'm familiar with, with Marigold, then, so are you saying that the, the bike lane is sometimes blocked? The bike lane, is the, is the bike lane sometimes blocked?
Because the bike, you know, I'm obviously can't park in front of my property on Marigold because it's probably through the street. But they have a park outside, which is North Brook.
Uh-huh. My question goes to safety. Is there a safety problem with the, I guess, load, additional loading of cars?
That's it. There's not, there's not a safety, you know, problem. It's more of a, it's, it's more of... You know, if, if we allow this property to over our strawberry green, to continue with a limited number of parking, how many people are gonna have to come across the street? I mean, or even across the street where the roads are thinner, where they have cars on both sides. You, you have to, you have to let people come through that thing because it turns into a tournament.
Is there a crosswalk there?
There is.
Uh-huh. So is that a safety issue? If people are crossing the street against, without a...
Not in my opinion, this is a safety issue.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Clough. Appreciate it. Okay. Ready? Jacob? Yep, okay. Jacob Clough, you would give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, of course. Councilman, my name is Jacob Clough, six three zero one York Street. I do live in Boise, but I've been a resident of Garden City my whole life. I bought a house outside of Garden City for the reason that was the most affordable house possible. I had to fix it up. But let's not get off topic on that. The reason I'm actually talking today is there's a couple of reasons I engage on, on this particular ordinance. One, my thoughts are spoken. And yes, I lived at that particular residence for a long time, but I also lived at three other residences in Garden City. Goodie Apartments and with friends. I was the one that had a fine for the housing in the area. And that was usually either bunking up with somebody or figuring out someplace to live. So it was relatively difficult even before these times. And past three years, I've got a house, so a little different timeframe by which I'm in context. We're talking about the developers looking at taking away spots. And that's my particular issue with, with the ordinance and what's, what's happening. I believe you're actually shipping responsibility of the developers into public and onto government to figure out whether they, where should their part be? If you're going to, if you're going to build a complex or place, you need to build appropriately with the needs of a apartment. One spot is not enough for a two-bedroom. While we want to wish that we live in a city or in a, in an area of the country that you can just go outside and walk to places, tonight is a great example. It's not going to be fun to walk or bike. It's not safe. We're going to talk about safety reasons. We still need to have the ability to own a vehicle or multiple vehicles as people need to go to work. Going across the, the city, if you look at people, for some contact, I've advised city council members, I've advised mayors, I've advised governors in my profession. I'm a political consultant and media consultant. And if you look at how people are distributed and worked for, you're traveling a lot. You have a lot of people traveling through downtown Boise to Meridian and to other places that are hubs for this entertainment industry. I'm not disagreeing with the fact that Garden City is going to be a great place to grab a beer, go to a winery, perfect place. But we have a lot of people that are traveling and the increased number of incidents that we have in Garden City coincide with that. We know that we are, we are trapped corridor for the rest of the valley and we're going to congest our streets even more while we have growing businesses. I, I, I would strongly urge the council to consider that, when they're considering the ordinances. I think the intent's in the right place. I think individuals are very scared about this and the more they're worried about it. I think there is going to be a solution. I just don't think this is the right one for this. And I will stand for any questions.
Great, thank you. Questions, council?
Mr. Clough?
Yes.
So your interest in Garden City lies because of your primal concern or because?
I actually want to buy the property in Garden City. I grew up in the area. I have looked at purchasing areas around my parents. I expect to leave the, the western side of, of the city, I guess the new township, I guess it's been referred to, west of, of Landwood. While I lived on east side of Landwood many times, it's, it's a place that I want to raise kids. It's, it's a good place. Family friendly and safe. Yeah, good high school, a good junior high. I attended all of them. I turned out okay. But yeah, it's, it, Garden City is a very, it's important all of my life and the, yeah, I, I, I understand that we all need to figure out a way to have more people live here. We are a part of the, of the valley, much. Also, my boss, Mayor. But they, this is an area that you're going to jive with. We have a great potential for a lot of great wineries. I believe the agenda is there. This isn't the solution. Parking side of this.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Clough. Any question, further questions? Okay, good. Thank you so much. Yep. Okay. Mr. May?
Thank you, by the way.
We'll take another stab at this here.
So would you, I'm confused. Did you want me to read through the whole thing or did you want to break this up into five?
Well, if there are, there are five people, if no one else is going to testify, they could yield their time to you.
Okay.
So, Sharon Ellis or Sharon Ellis? Are you going to yield your time to Mr. May? Okay. Harry Grabby, you're going to yield your time to Mr. May? Okay. Megan, just have one name there. Are you yielding your time to Mr. May? Okay. John Frazier?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Mr. May, you have fifteen minutes.
Thank you so much. My name is Don May, D O N M A Y. And I'm, okay, so, before I begin, I'd like to applaud the tremendous work done by Garden City staff. Janet and her colleagues have performed a Herculean task in a very short time, in a very short time period. I believe their recommendations are by and large exceptional. I want to say thank you. The agenda number one, parking cost, resident feedback, Dr. Shoup's recommendations, managing on-street parking, business feedback, business requirements and recommendations. Parking cost. Just to put, parking space on private property, bare land in Garden City is anywhere from five thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars per space. The closer you get to the river, the more these prices escalate. Just the cost of a single car garage without the land is fifteen thousand dollars. The cost of a single car garage with the land is between twenty and forty thousand dollars in Garden City right now. This is an actual spreadsheet of how much it costs a real developer to build multi-story parking garages during the past eight years. He has broken down the cost on a per-space basis. Every year, his costs went up. On two separate projects in 2021, his actual costs were thirty-eight thousand and forty-four thousand dollars per space. On February eighth of this year, Mr. Vanderhelm of the Parking Design Group, a company that builds parking garages, said the average above-ground parking garage space costs between forty and forty-five thousand dollars. Interestingly, this is directly in line with the developer spreadsheet I just showed you. Here, we compare the price of a parking spot depending on if it's surface parking or only let, where the only costs are the land or a standard garage or a parking deck. The cost that is added to one's mortgage ranges from an average of one hundred one dollars per month for land only to two hundred and eighty dot, eighty-five dollars per month for a parking deck garage spot. Rentals have to add thirty-five percent onto the price in order to cover overhead management and maintenance. This results in rents increasing up to three hundred and eighty-five dollars per space per month if they use a parking deck garage. The impact of parking on one's housing cost is substantial. Parking costs alone start at twenty-four percent of one's housing costs and go all the way up to twenty-seven percent when two spaces are provided. That's why it's critical to keep the number of parking spots at just one per unit. The cost of a guest parking spot is not limited just to the cost of the land. There is also an opportunity cost of not being able to build something on it, which is a townhome in this example. And garden apartments have, have even more of an opportunity cost since you can put more units on each guest parking spot. The profit on a typical four hundred and fifty thousand dollar townhome is fifteen percent or sixty-seven thousand dollars. This lost opportunity cost is ultimately passed on to consumers. Therefore, the true cost of each guest parking spot when townhomes or garden-style apartments are built is at least thirty-eight thousand dollars and can easily exceed fifty-eight thousand dollars once the cost of land is added. When requiring one-half guest spot per unit is you're thinking of doing for the first ten units of any development, the impact of the mortgage per unit will be an average of an extra two hundred and two dollars per unit just for guest parking. This is the cost for just one-half guest spot. If these units are rented, it will be an additional two hundred and twenty-one dollars per month, per month, per one-half guest spot. As a result, I highly recommend starting your guest parking at one-tenth of a spot per unit right away. Another way to save money on housing is to allow narrow lots with tandem parking. You do already allow narrow lots, by the way. Narrow lots allow a more efficient use of the land and more efficient floor plans. They can put two cars in a tandem garage. The only way this can be accomplished is if tandem parking is allowed. Residents' feedback. I'd like to call attention to the silent working-class majority who have voiced their opinions in your online surveys and email testimony. There are two groups I'd like to talk about, residents and business owners slash employees. I'll start with residents. Residents I've listened to and read comments from have said the following. Housing prices are skyrocketing. Residents are struggling to make ends meet. Residents believe parking is too expensive, costing, as we've seen, up to forty-five thousand dollars per spot. That's very conservative, by the way, and subsequently adding up to three hundred and eighty-five dollars in rental costs per space per month. Residents believe money is better spent on housing than on parking. And finally, residents want affordable housing close to their jobs, restaurants and parks. I heard stories from young families, first-time homebuyers, Boise State students and retirees, all wanting affordable housing. They simply want a safe, warm and comfortable place to call home that is not an hour's drive from their work. They want the ability to walk or quickly drive to Garden City's river and greenbelt and breweries and restaurants. Single mothers with one car want separate bedrooms to put their children. Eighty-two percent of respondents to your first survey said there was, quote, "just enough" or, quote, "too much parking available already." Ninety-six percent of respondents to your second survey wanted to eliminate parking requirements altogether. Twenty-one of twenty-four emailed responses or ninety-two percent asked for a reduction in overall parking requirements. Thirty-three of thirty-five responses or ninety-four percent asked for a reduction in guest parking. Please keep in mind the high cost of guest parking as well, which is at least two hundred and nineteen dollars per unit when you require one-half spot per unit. Finally, twenty-seven separate people wrote in to comment on the need for affordable housing and twelve called out tandem parking as a specific request to be allowed. Dr. Shoup's recommendations. Dr. Donald Shoup has made it his career at UCLA to study parking. His solution: eliminate all parking minimums and then establish parking permits and parking meters or phone apps that are only implemented once the street gets crowded enough. Permits and meters or apps should be priced with, quote, "demand-based pricing" so that there is always one or two spots per block available to park in. This means parking must not be too expensive nor too cheap. Finally, a city should funnel the extra revenue back into the very neighborhoods being served for things like extra streetlights, benches and police patrols. Just to summarize, Garden City should eliminate parking minimums, but permits, put permits or meters or parking apps on heavily parked roads. Price them so that supply and demand are essentially balanced and there's always twenty percent availability and funnel the extra proceeds back into the neighborhood. Over two hundred U.S. cities, large and small, and states red and blue have embraced these recommendations in the past fifteen years and have eliminated all parking, all parking minimums in at least part of their cities. Dr. Shoup's recommendations have even been used by twenty-five cities across the U.S. that are just like Garden City, those that are small and snowy and that don't have any public bus routes at all. Providing only the bare parking minimums is not for every residential development, however. The free market will always respond and build expensive luxury homes with two and a half parking spaces per lot. These are just minimums after all. But please make room for the most affordable housing units where people can get by with just a minimum of parking, where every dollar matters, where even an additional fifty dollars in rent can make or break someone, much less three hundred and eighty-five dollars in rent. Many residents select their housing based on how much parking is available. If there's not enough, they often won't buy or rent that particular unit in the first place or they'll trim down their car ownership to match. The free market is a wonderful thing. Managing on-street parking. Public parking is easily managed using permits. In this example, there are twenty spaces available on the street. There are nine existing houses and one new apartment complex that is planned to be built. A parking benefit district may decide to allow each of them two parking permits. That's right, an entire apartment complex might only receive two permits. This will require the apartment developer to provide enough parking for her residents on-site, regardless of the parking minimums, and subsequently tell her residents there's only a limited amount of parking available. Therefore, there will be plenty of parking available for local residents. Additionally, parking meters or apps can also be used to limit parking on the streets. Business feedback. Business owners said the following. They are struggling to make ends meet and many are struggling to stay open. They are scared of losing their businesses if business, if parking regulations go into place. Many small businesses like wineries, breweries and restaurants may not start in the first place due to parking costs. Others may be forced to close. Finally, business owners believe the city should properly regulate public on-street parking with meters or apps so there's always twenty percent availability for customers to use instead of being wasted by non-customers who park there all day long. So please make room for the most affordable businesses where customers can get by with just a minimum of parking, where every dollar matters, where even an additional fifty dollars in rent can make or break a small business. Businesses want government to manage on-street parking so there's a continual twenty percent availability of parking spaces nearby for employees and customers. Business requirements. In this real-world Garden City example, this particular auto repair shop will be just fine because it has a parking lot. But keep in mind that some small businesses do not. Some are right on a busy street and rely on public street parking. In this real-world example in Garden City, this popular cafe would not be allowed to exist as it only has two on-street publics, public spaces. Four private spaces would be required according to your new regulations. So please be careful what you regulate. For businesses that are next door to one another, shared public parking is possible and is used throughout the United States. During the daytime, retail and offices use most of the spots, while at night, restaurants use most of the spots. In this fictional example, retail and restaurants share their spaces. If they had to have separate spaces that could not be shared, they would need a total of eleven spaces. However, by sharing them, they're more than fine with eight. In this real-world example in one of my favorite cities in Albany, California, there are tons of restaurants and service businesses. Yet there are only ten actual spaces on the street. Yet somehow, every day when I go there for lunch, which is quite often, there is availability to park on that side of the street. Sometimes I might have to wait a little bit, but a spot eventually comes open. Albany simply uses ninety-minute time parking spaces. If we use Jenna's parking requirements, they would need to supply twenty-four spaces, which is far more than what they actually need in real life. Recommendations. Ideally, you would eliminate parking minimums altogether and implement Dr. Shoup's recommendations. But if you feel that you must regulate parking, please use the ratio of one to ten guest parking spots for all units to help save up to two hundred and twenty-one dollars per month. Please reduce the number of parking spaces for three-bedroom units to just one space to help save up to three hundred and eighty-five dollars per month. Many single-parent households have more than one child, yet only have one car. Also, please allow tandem parking. Please reduce the required parking for businesses to none so that they can determine for themselves how much parking to provide. Or allow businesses to use on-street parking to fulfill their quotas and allow for shared parking agreements with neighboring businesses. On behalf of our public servants and business owners, thank you so much for listening.
That was very efficient, Mr. May. Appreciate the time and effort it took to put that together.
You're welcome.
And it worked out that your interested parties came here to, to name you a spokesperson for them. Counsel, do you have any, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. May, thank you for your time and it is a beautiful presentation. There's no way I can digest that as quickly as you went through it, but it looks very valuable. My email address is found on the Garden City webpage. Will you please send that to me?
Absolutely. I'd be, I'd be most happy to.
I'm going to need to spend more time with it. There's just, it's dense with information.
It's a lot of information and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions offline for anybody or in this public meeting. I'll be attending the second public meeting in case people would like.
in case people would like to ask me questions there too. Yeah, it's, it's a lot and um, oh my gosh, I didn't bring him, but Dr. Shoup, he wrote literally two books this thick on the topic. They're, they're massive. I haven't read them all.
I'd rather read your presentation.
Yeah.
Um. Yes, go ahead.
Um, Mr. May, for clarity, um, do you live in Garden City or do you own property?
I own property in Garden City.
And where, where is your residence?
In, in California.
What city?
San Diego.
Okay. Um. Mr. Mayor, as a follow-up, uh, so again, appreciate the presentation and to President of the Council's uh, comments. It is going to take a while to digest a lot of that information. Um. Do you have any reconsideration of the information that you presented? Your statement was you've spoken to residents. They believe that there should be a reduction in parking requirements. We've heard other public testimony that's has the, the other viewpoint where we need to enforce and create more parking options if for residential area. Do, do you factor or consider that that's a legitimate concern also?
So what you're asking is have I listened to people who have said we want more parking? Yeah, absolutely. In fact, uh, that's, it's throughout Dr. Shoup's books. Um, this, uh, he, listen, th- these, these uh, solutions that he's come up with have not just been drawn overnight on a, on a chalkboard and said, hey, let's just throw it against the wall. These have been through major cities. I didn't list them all. I did send them in a, in an email, at least the ones that applied to you guys. Major cities with huge, massive public hearings. You can imagine the amount of feedback that went back and forth. And these city councils, you know, heard from people who really want a lot more parking and people who wanted less parking. And what they decided was the best way to solve that solution was to let go of parking minimums and let the free market decide on private property. And then on public, on, on the public streets where the government has control to do those, those simple little procedures, which is either to use parking permits or apps or meters and price them accordingly. So there's always going to be twenty percent availability on the streets. So you'll always have a place to park. It's a beautiful thing. Um, and by the way, I moved here. I went to graduate school at Boise State. You'd asked me earlier where I lived. So I've been in the valley since nineteen ninety-seven. I just recently moved to San Diego. So um, all my investment properties are here in the valley. But I have a long pr- proud tradition of being here in the valley.
That's great.
Thank you.
Mr. May, um, to implement a metered parking and other parking or parking district, there would be a requirement for enforcement. And if I'm tracking, I just, or I'm hoping I am, is that you believe there's a model in which that pays for itself and that in fact, there should be uh, additional revenues from that solution.
That's a great question. Absolutely. There is, there is traditionally a, a quite a surplus, like a fifty percent surplus of monies from these, from these parking benefit districts. And that's again, I can maybe follow up with some more information from Dr. Shoup, but um, yeah, the uh, the districts do absolutely pay for themselves. A couple of things to be noted. One, the districts don't have to be implemented until the streets get crowded enough, until you have eighty percent uh, crowdedness, you know, or twenty percent, only twenty percent availability left. There's no need to implement any type of program. You can just let people park where they want, as they've been doing the whole time. So this is not, you don't need to implement a district everywhere throughout Garden City right away or ever for that matter. Just in certain areas where the, it, the parking is already very, very uh, bad or has gotten that bad. And then you implement these simple uh, you know, demand-based pricing. Um, and you can even give out, I know that there's some concern this evening about uh, people who can't afford it. You can certainly uh, provide vouchers for parking so that they can park for free in these districts. You can give free parking permits. Um, you can allow people free time. Um, there's a lot of different ways that you can help people who can't afford parking to afford that parking, particularly those that, those residents that already live there.
So, Mr. May, I apologize for monopolizing. So that's somewhat counter, correct? Because you're saying let the free market dictate, but then you're saying, but have government come in and regulate it and help subsidize.
Yeah, tracking, absolutely. I mean, eh, each, every single parking district is different and unique. And it should be looked at as that. Uh, I know Hannah talked about the needs of um, the East End being very different from the plantation and that couldn't be any more true and um, you know, the incomes in the East End are actually, they're skyrocketing now, but um, but it's really up to the, to the government to try to regulate how much they want to help out local residents or not. Re- parking permits don't have to be very expensive and, and regulation, the other thing, doesn't have to even occur. Uh, a lot of times you can just have parking permits. You don't even have to need somebody there. People just self-regulate. Um, u- usually until a, a phone call is made to the police officer saying somebody's been parking on my street for forever and then they go out there and write a ticket or do a tow or something like that. But it's not really a heavy, heavy demand situation typically when you do, you, when you're looking at parking permits. Now, when you're looking at a, a street like I showed in Solano Avenue, California, where people are in and out of there all day, I had my tires parked almost every single time I go there. A little vehicle drives around and she, he or she will mark the tire. And then an hour and a half later, if I'm not out of there, they'll give me a ticket for twenty bucks, I think. And I've been ta- tagged before. But it, it keeps me out of there. It's enough to keep me up, you know, keep me moving.
Hey, hey, other questions of Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have a question. Thank you, uh, Mr. May for your presentation. Um. I just want to make sure I get my assumptions. So my ass- the assumption that you made in the presentation is that a developer, if he doesn't have parking, is going to pass that savings of not having to spend the amount of money that they, um, what if you put into parking onto the uh, renter or the buyer of that property?
Yeah, is that a question? Yeah, that's absolutely correct assumption. I'd say maybe, maybe.
My point is that goes completely counter to the free market slide that you put up because in my experience they're gonna not, a, a developer out of the kindness of the heart isn't necessarily gonna say, oh, I'm gonna save forty-five thousand dollars by not having to put a space in and then drop the price of their property by forty-five thousand. They're gonna charge market rate. And so, and it, and I've seen this, right? So I've seen houses that are completed and I've seen the price jump sixty thousand dollars just because that's where the prices were going and that developer collected sixty extra thousand dollars. So I find the, we're gonna save money by not, that that savings will be passed on to the consumer. Goes to me completely counter to your, let the free market dictate. Cause a free market dictates gonna rent, is gonna dictate the cost of housing. And then when it comes, just my final point, when it comes to affordable housing, workforce housing. And I've done a lot of research and talked a lot of developers. Saving on parking doesn't make affordable housing. It's a, it's a relationship between local, state, federal government to actually create workforce, affordable housing and saving money on a parking spot is not gonna make a residential or rental unit affordable. So that, I just want to understand that contradiction that I see in that dis- in that presentation.
Sure. Can I comment? Okay. Thank you. Yeah, no, those are great points. Um. So the, as a developer, I'm a developer. I can tell you that certain units won't be built unless it pencils, unless it's profitable enough. You won't build a certain housing units. Um, so the um, they won't be built in the first place.
And that's, and that's your point is that development just won't happen.
Deva- development will happen, but you'll get luxury apartments. So you'll get, you know, very expensive places. You won't get this middle work-class workforce housing that's so desperately desired by so many people that I've spoken to and that I've read about online. We're not talking about here uh, uh, subsidized housing. That's a different topic for a different night. And that does serve a particular class. That's very underserved, as you know, by the way, extremely. So we really do depend on the, on the free market to provide for most people for that, that lower to middle class, this housing that's affordable. And just like you said, the prices go up, that they skyrocket, that absolutely developers are gonna take advantage of that. They also go down and right now developers have had to lower their prices significantly. And many developers during the last recession not only lost money, they went out of business and went bankrupt. So these are very serious issues for developers to keep in mind when they're looking at whether something's gonna pencil or not. There has to be a certain profit margin that they're comfortable they're gonna make typically fifteen percent. If you can't make that, you're not gonna develop. It's just not gonna happen. And even then, even then, a developer like me, we have to put our whole, all of our money on the line. This is not you know, monopoly money. This is real money. This is real. This is my real retirement money. I could lose it all. A lot of developers do and have.
Okay. And then one last question I, and just, and I, I may just read the presentation as well. Is kind of the goal to drive residents to one-car households?
The goal is to ride a place in the marketplace for one household cars. Like there was a, my good friend Carrie, I don't want to testify on her behalf, but she was going to testify this evening. She's the perfect example of somebody who wants a three-bedroom place with an, then one of those bedrooms would be used as an office. One of those bedrooms would be used for her grandchildren. She only has one car. She has almost no guests that come over. I'm sorry. Said that, um, you know, that stay overnight anyway. And so there's.
Do you feel that's the norm? Cause I, like, for instance, I have a daughter that has three movement roommates in a three-bedroom apartment and all three of them have cars.
Sure.
And I would say that's just as common as her situation. So again, I kind of, my point before is how do you balance that enough? And I, I'm not sure no parking restrictions or anything like that is the solution.
We're not, no, we're not trying to create this evening. We're not trying to create one form of housing that's gonna be built from here, from here forward. Not everyone are gonna use these. These are parking minimums. Minimums that can be used by developers and that can be purchased and rented by certain people. Not everyone, when they see they only have one parking spot, is gonna rent that place. I know when my wife and I, we rent an apartment in Salt Lake City, eh, they only had one parking spot. We didn't rent it. We didn't rent it.
You're, you're really driving who, who's gonna rent that spot then is the, is the goal. So if I, if I have two cars and the, and there's not a spot for me, I'm just gonna go rent Boise and, or somewhere. Does that harm? Or city not attracting of?
Or a place in Garden City. I mean, there's gonna be plenty of developers who are gonna provide two bedroom, their two parking spaces per unit. You know, that, I mean, that, these are parking minimums. These aren't, i- if, if I, I, I don't, I don't do this myself because I'm kind of targeted on the lower to, to middle class. But there are plenty of developers out there who focus on buying expensive properties along the river. And they focus on luxury housing and they put, those luxury housing, you better believe if they typically provide a lot of, a lot of parking, two and a half spots per unit or two spots per unit and, and they pay for it. But, but there's a, there's a niche in the marketplace for all these different types of housing. We're not saying with these parking minimums that you just have to, you know, that everyone's gonna build to that. That's false. That's totally false.
Thank you. And then one last question. Um, that was the co-share of businesses sharing parking lots and.
Yes, sir.
So I think in Garden City, I drove by somewhere, I mean, I've been the stagecoach where it's like stagecoach parking only. I don't wanna see any, no split rail park. And so we kind of, do we have any of, I, I know, I thought I saw that. I'm not sure. One of those place down there is like, is there an issue where there's gonna be not enough parking where either if, if those establishments like the breweries in particular and the wineries, which is awesome. Well, they're all kind of a nighttime probably business where then we're gonna have a problem where people won't visit those businesses because like, you know, I'm not gonna go down there because I can't find a place to park and we're actually harming that? Is that, is there a concern there that people won't visit it, visit those businesses because there's a lack of parking?
Uh, you, I think what your question is saying, correct and from wrong is if a business decides to share its parking with somebody else, uh, is there gonna be less parking available?
Or if there's no parking restrictions. Um, you said businesses let them decide what they want to.
Yeah, let them decide. Absolutely. If, if you're a business and you don't have, it was just very simple. If I'm a business and I open up and I have, and I, I'm a, a winery, right? And I expect maybe ten customers on average per evening, ten cars per evening. And I don't have any parking at all and no parking spaces for them. And maybe I have two public spaces out front. I'm not gonna last very long. That's just the bottom line. I'm not gonna last. I mean, they've got it. People are, business owners are smart. A- and if they're, if they're dumb, they'll go out of business. And I hate to say that, but that's true. They go out of business. And so business owner, eh, the key is to, the, what we're advocating for is to let people decide for themselves how much parking to, to do and to work with the business owners in these parking districts to talk about how much parking do you need? Well, let's look at like, like that diagram I had up there. Um. It, it was a real-world example of, of Solano Avenue. And you can see there, there's, there's a bunch of restaurants. There's a bunch of places that need a lot of parking typically. And so you could, if you were, this were in Garden City and you were thinking about, about putting a district there, you could look at that and you could say about how many spaces do we need during the day? About how many spaces do we need at night? And is that gonna be enough for our shared parking, for our public parking if we put in public parking with meters? And, and working with the restaurants too, because you can always price something high enough, like six dollars an hour. Like sometimes you'll see in, in New York City, things will be six dollars an hour, you know? Where, yeah, you're gonna be just fine. You always have twenty percent availability. But nobody's gonna wanna come. No customers are gonna wanna come and to your cafe. I know I wouldn't go there. Right now, parking is free in that particular place. I'd probably pay a dollar an hour or two dollars an hour, but.
Is one final question. So do you feel it's the role of the city to help with that conversation?
Yeah, absolutely. It kind of has to be when you're talking about parking districts and that's in this code, I believe. Uh, Jenna can probably speak more to it than at this point than I can. But um, yeah, parking districts are um, where you have um, where you're gonna allow these meters and parking apps. We're, we're, parking apps are great because you don't have to put in any, any infrastructure. You know, it just, you, you doing, everything's electronic. Um, but uh, yeah, so yes, the, the, the city does, you guys would have to work to establish these specific parking districts. Um, that's if you decide to, to, to go with meters, which are only needed, by the way, in places that are eighty percent crowded on average. So most of Garden City, ninety-five percent of Garden City, at least ninety-five percent does not fall into that category. There's very few places and where it is uh, uh, acute, there's an acute need for this type of thing to happen. And we all know where that is. It's in the East End. It might be some other places. The gentleman spoke this, this evening about a place where they might need that as well, or at least parking permits.
So to my question to Hannah, then it's, you, you're in favor of maybe overlaying certain part of the city and leave the code as it is elsewhere?
Yes, yeah. I mean, I think you should establish this code, this proposed code um, for the entire city and then have these overlay districts, these parking benefit districts where you can lift all parking requirements. That'd be my desire. Um, and yes, they, they would, it requires some detail. It requires some sitting down and looking at a map just like this on both sides of the road. The good news is there's not many areas like that in Garden City to begin with. Um, so the exercises. Um, and once you establish a district, it's done, right? You can move on to the next one if and when one ever happens. But Garden City will, will grow. You've got a lot of, or some catching up to do, granted. You've got some catching up to do, but once you get caught up with that, then it's gonna grow very, very slowly. I mean, one every five years or so, you might have to implement or ten years, in my opinion.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions, counsel? Great. Thank you, Mr. May.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate. Hey, one more, uh, Brian Rollins. Welcome, Mr. Rollins. Uh, if you would, uh, give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Uh, Brian Rollins, hit the board real one with the plantation right, Garden City. Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, I actually wasn't ready to comment tonight, but just to be, uh, the dialogue. I am obviously a resident and also in the summer at the city. Uh, I've also been a real estate broker, uh, of course, real estate broker, scholar like twelve years. Uh, I know a lot of people commenting here tonight. Uh, but I did want to kind of just revisit some of the themes um, that I heard, what do you think? Uh, I really enjoyed Hannah's presentation, uh, specifically because I think there was a lot of innovative thought uh, behind that. Really wanted to support uh, some of her comments because I think there's strategic ways to really implement this, think done. Uh, did a good job. Just maybe go to about just talking about that because the reality is, and obviously I'm very interested in this conversation. Uh, plantation is a very different neighborhood than very fourth street. Right? And we have a city where we've had um, the zoning code that's allowed a lot of bigger developments throughout the city. Uh, but you've got an intersection of very suburban with very urban. You now have one of the tallest towers in the state from a residential perspective uh, going up the river and very close to uh, large suburban states that are on the other side of the river in the plantation or riverside or the other districts in the city. Um, so I just wanted to uh, just recognize that there are various elements of the city and I think the key takeaway tonight is it's also very different product types. Right? You're looking at a podium-style projects that's going eighteen stories. That's gonna have different parking needs. You're on the greenbelt, you've got access to amenities. You went down downtown Boise, you know, the Gibson. You went down downtown Boise, you know, the Gibson, if the main, like rather get approved, the two units with zero parking spaces, obviously that's the poster title. Uh, Boise has continued to do that, uh, but it works. Um, I think in the Marygold situation that we heard earlier tonight, I certainly understand. Um, the complaints of that because you're dealing with a very different range or crowd. Um, so I think as we're looking at that, one thing I also wanted to hit on is, uh, I very much agree. Uh, the fact of the matter is the cost of the parking are borne by the tenants. Uh, that's how this works from a development perspective. Uh, I think from my perspective, uh, this is a broker that brokers a lot of these projects. Uh, probably the number one question I get is rentability. And rentability is based on amenities, it's based on walkability and it's based on parking ratios. And it depends on the product type and it depends on the location. So it's not a. One size fits all equation. Um, but I can tell you that when a developer looking at a project, they're looking at what's my cap on cost? What's the market cap? And to Don's point, is there enough of a spread there to make it worth it? Um, but those costs, whether it's a podium project, which is probably the most expensive parking environment you can have versus the, you know, land. In Garden City, it's very expensive too. Service parking is getting, uh, to be, to be the same, but those, those costs are passed on. Uh, to the consumer. So I think it gets important as we look at this, we're, it's not a one size fits all equation. Um, and I think it's important to just recognize that that district that we have on East End, especially on the river. Um, especially Veterans Park East, I agree with him, to the east, is a very different district from what we have elsewhere. Um, so I just wanted to voice my. Uh, thoughts on that as I was sitting there listening along with the feedback that I get on a daily basis from the developers, I can say right now. Uh, I'm working with a dental client that's looking at a office down on thirty-fourth street that he would like to. Uh, to put his practice there and he's not going with it because the parking isn't sufficient for what he needs for his clients. And so I do believe at the end of the day, the private market will have an influence on these. And we're looking elsewhere and we recognize the cost of the land is higher than what he can pay. There's some use to be put in because he's going to be so much less space for his property.
Great.
So just a few, few comments, but.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Any questions, counsel? Great. Thanks so much. Appreciate your perspective. See, I got handed one more here, um, Mr. Jones. Welcome, Mr. Jones. If you would, give it your name and address for the record.
So I'll just kind of start by saying, I can, I support this work here with all of our, that would be my number one choice. I do, and when I say that, I mean, on private property. So I think as I've listened to so many of the complaints that coming before you, almost all of the complaints are actually complaints. About how Garden City and ACHD deal with their partner on public ground. And the failures of the city to correctly address how people park in your public property and ACHD, I guess it's the. Ultimate decision on that, but you guys certainly could have to say. And so, you know, I think that's the real big picture because that. The city can choose to regulate the parking that everybody is out there complaining about, but they don't. Um, and that, you know, I think we, for those people that believe that. The government isn't the best entity to tell private landowners how to use their land. We also believe that you can tell yourself, I mean, use your land. We're not arguing. And I think. You know, I can go back to the search, it's to pay permits. And it's because if, if, you know, I think these guys are here all miracle. If there were permits that didn't have enough parking, then you had to have the permits to even park out on the street. Then that problem would go away. It would have nothing to do with how much parking was built in my project because. If people realize, oh hey, I have to build a parking for my development that they're going to use, they would. And I think that's maybe the bigger picture here of what I kind of see going wrong is that every single person who's had a complaint about parking. It wasn't an actual complaint about private property parking. It's always about how it's dealt with in public parking. It's on the street. So that's maybe one of the first things I want to just kind of get out of the way because I don't think anybody would argue that's really perfect. Not one person is actually saying, hey, this development doesn't have enough parking. It's actually what happens when people are allowed to park in. Quite frankly, first come, first served, taxpayer funded, free parking spaces on the street. And right now, our rules say, hey, the first person who gets there can park there. And lots of people aren't happy about that. And they are saying to you, you should change that. Uh, but then they're saying, hey, we don't support you changing allowing private people to determine how much parking they need on their own. The people who have the money at risk and who are putting, you know, their, their retirement on the line, you want to say, oh, we, we're the government, we know better. We actually know how many parking slip spaces, split rail line, you know, the stage there trying to. And I think that those businesses know how much parking they need. And that's, that's the reality. They're going to always get it right. I think, you know, what I see is this really hurts small business the most. Um, it hurts the smaller affordable housing the most. Uh, because a lot of the regulation, you know, you're really smart. There's not a lot of flexibility, you know, we're doing this based on two veterans. If you look at some of the neighbor works projects, those are, some of them are six hundred and fifty square feet, two veteran, two veteran. Some of them are seven hundred square, three veteran, three veteran. That has to have a system about parking is something that might have been a much larger unit. And so we're not building in square footage, we're not doing some of the things that I think make that smarter also. And I think when big businesses come in, like Trader Joe's is the greatest name parking company. Read stuff about parking and what parking people hate the most is always Trader Joe's. Go to the downtown Trader Joe's, everybody sits, their parking isn't right. But it is right because Trader Joe's does that everywhere they go. Because that's actually what they determine works the best for them to maximize their profit.
Can you kind of wrap it up? Yep. Great. Thank you. Uh, questions of Mr. Jones?
Just one question, so. My question is, so then if, um. Do you think someone could argue that, well, by easing restrictions on private parking, that gives them. Kind of a free pass to say, heck, I'm going to not have parking in my spot because I'll just let them park on the street, right? So then what would happen if we just banned altogether and just said, you know what? That could be a safety issue or ACHD comes to there and says you can't have parking on any of those streets, right? And so then that's going to hurt. Your development, obviously, because then it's like, oh, I didn't have enough parking. And, and so I think. And I don't know the answer to this question. It just seems to me that there's also an argument that say developers are just gonna. Add less parking because they know that people will just park on the street, right? And they'll push those people to the street. And then we've got to implement. Parking zones, overlay zones, or at some point, there's not enough parking on the street because there's none left. And I guess Livework Creek would be an example. A lot of it's under not developed. So there's parking now. Once that's all developed, there's not going to be any spaces. And then the people won't visit, you know, I'm not going to go to Luciano's if I can't find a parking spot. I'm not going to go. To a district if I can't find a parking spot. So I guess there, I'm, again, I kind of come to that balance. It's. And, and I just, I think people are skeptical, potentially of developers of just. Putting less parking just because we'll let them park off, off street.
Well, I think it's.
How do you answer?
I agree with your stance. But I think it's, once again, it's a pretty market. I mean, right now, there's clear plenty of parking. No businesses are going out of this, it's fair, right? Everything that's there is still operating. We haven't seen some businesses close, right? And so as more businesses come in, more and more parking will affect the views. And eventually as businesses come in, it will get harder for people to park and maybe there, there will be a loss of customer because of that parking. But it's kind of like there's, there's a parking lot that just opened a couple years ago, during COVID and more. Somebody took their empty lot, opened the parking lot, right there on High Park. And so if you don't think people will respond to markets, then you're not paying attention to, to what's happening around us. And so what I'm saying is as it gets harder for businesses to make money because of parking issues. They'll either adjust more parking or they'll change their business model. And that's just generally what happens. I mean, so the new businesses coming in will adjust. Then the old businesses that are there, if they didn't build any parking, other than to take advantage of something. I would say that's the reason you now as a city council should probably start to look at how you're going to regulate the public parking. As opposed to trying to tell people on their private property.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Uh, I had one more slip in here. So I think we'll take one more and then, uh, then we're going to have to wrap this portion up. Francis. Would give us your name and address for the record.
I just wanted to put one more, uh, issue that Mr. May had raised in the last meeting. I thought it was a great issue to put on the radar. As we consider this, um, another. Potentially great solution for development would be to, um, reduce the size of the parking spaces. Uh, we have a. In my, from what I've researched, a very large parking space needs requirement for ten by twenty. Feet is a very large parking space by any standards in this country. I think nine by eighteen is a very, uh. Standard space that you'd find anywhere that usually applies space around the country. And, you know, when we're. A developer and trying to, uh, you know. Fit spaces in and maximize profitability or while thinking it's pencil, those are more time to estimate all the difference also. So.
You're quite welcome. Uh, any questions, Mr. Powell?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Um, might I request that you, uh, reach out to the Zoom community, uh, just one more time and make sure we don't have anyone waiting to testify?
Okay, uh, is there anyone on Zoom that, uh. Would like to testify? So, uh, use the raise your hand. Tool on your Zoom. I had to think of what it was. Okay, I don't, I don't see any. Well, thank you all, uh, for. Coming and, uh, sharing your thoughts with the council, uh, the effort you took to come down here. It's important. It helps. Government work. Uh, we can all judge on how good government works, but, uh, anyway, uh. Uh, with the testimony over, uh, Ms. Thornborough, do you want to wrap up? Counsel, I'm going to recommend that we hold the hearing open, uh. Until the twenty-seventh, so you have time to digest the new material that's been presented. And then, uh, uh, most of that new material came from Mr. May. He's indicated he'll be here for the next round. If there are questions, uh. That would afford an opportunity for that. But, uh, Ms. Thornborough, do you want to close this out for tonight? Counsel, am I getting a head nod that we'll just continue this?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I would, um, ask, uh. If it's proper for the council to have some level of deliberation in public at this time, uh, just because. You know, we know we're going to possibly do some of this in the future, but I'd like to know what my colleagues think.
Okay.
Uh, so that I can be prepared to consider their ideas prior to a decision being made. And, and of course, if we do that. Uh, outside of a meeting, we're violating this sort of public meeting requirement. Um, so, uh, maybe could we deliberate without a decision and hold, hold open?
Uh, certainly can do that. Let's, uh, let Ms. Thornborough wrap up. Anything you need to wrap up this evening?
Um, mayor and members of the council, uh, for the, the most part, I'm standing for questions and that there was quite a bit, uh. Discussed here tonight, and this is quite the topic. Um, I did want to point out that a lot of what was discussed may be. Um, already within the draft proposal or at some level, maybe in the draft proposal. Um, examples may be the parking district. Um, there is a reduction in size from the ten, uh, by twenty requirement, for example, and then where. There may, um, be some level of addressing it, but not exactly as we've heard in the testimony. Uh, for example, in the equivalent parking adjustment table, there are provisions to decrease the parking requirements with legally binding mechanisms. To allow for affordable housing as defined there within. And so I just did want to point out that some of what was discussed in testimony is, uh, scattered either already, uh, and. Um, suggested within the code, um, or. Uh, tangentially, uh, addressed, uh, within the draft proposal. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh. I'm going to have you just stand by, uh, while the, uh, council president has made a good suggestion. Counsel, is there. Other comments or some discussion you want to have, uh, based on what we've heard this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to start off with some of my thoughts.
Sure.
I think, uh, something, a theme I've heard today is, uh. Uh, in support of not regulating private property, but regulating, um, that which is public. Um, and within our ability to regulate, we, we know there's a complex problem with, um, our, our role with ACHD and, and who owns the streets. My, my question, um, kind of an open question or thought process to the council is, is not. An immediate effect that this would have. But the long-term effect fifteen, twenty years out. If we don't regulate. Private parking on private property and we do regulate street parking. Uh, what I think, uh, is bound to happen is that our narrower streets. Uh, in the, in the, in the numbered community. Um, will become, uh, more and more throttled with street parking, even if it is. In fact, regulated by meters or, um, on demand, demand shifting, um, pricing with an app. Uh, are we creating an environment over the course of fifteen or twenty years? That the only new development that can come because of that infrastructure is podium style developing where, um. A deep-pocketed developer or well-funded developer comes in and buys up entire blocks of, of property. To create a product, uh, to create a product, product that is by all arguments, a luxury product. Um, you know, are we making and, and maybe that's the future of Garden City? I mean, there, it is a, it's a river city. Um, and a lot of people like to live by the river, but my fear with this model is. That we ultimately shift Garden City to a luxury community. Um, and I think we want to have a variety of housing. It's in our comprehensive plan. But more and more, I just don't see. Of affordable offering. Um, and, and by affordable, you know, the middle class. Um, and we're not talking about, um, those that I would consider, uh, you know, underprivileged. So it's just, it's a, it's an open thought and question, and I wanted my colleagues to hear that and be thinking about that. And I would love to hear your ideas.
Anyone else want to chime in?
I, I take the comprehensive plan, um. Pretty seriously. I think a lot of people put a lot of effort, as Mr. Landry mentioned. And so I think we do need to look at the comprehensive plan. And how we want our city to develop. And, and I think to his point, congestion plays a part of that. Does, if we don't regulate parking, are we going to have congestion along the river that really doesn't make. It as nice of a place as it could be? Or do we allow for private property rights and the market takes care of itself? I don't know. I think, I think we need to look at that comprehensive plan and, you know, I think sometimes it doesn't get reviewed very often. And I think it would be a good exercise to just really kind of dive into it and say, okay, what, what does that really say? Because supposedly that's what people in this community came together, what we'd like it to look like in ten to twenty years. And I think sometimes we lose sight of it because we're, we're looking at individual developments or individual parking code. And I think in context, I think that should be part of the exercises. And how does it relate to what we want? And then codify. What people wanted to comprehend.
Any other thoughts?
Uh, President of the Council, um. I'm, I'm happy that you brought up the long-term effect and impacts of whatever decision we make. I'm, I'm happy that you brought up the long-term effect and impacts of whatever decision we make and recommendations. Because I do think that that's probably where a lot, a lot of my concerns lie is, you know, what does, we, we have approved, you know, a lot of high-density developments that have yet to be completed along the river. And so we're operating somewhat blindly because we don't know, we don't have the data right now to say, you know, this is the impact. What we do have, or at least what I have, is the impact that we're realizing right now in the forty second. And I've been very vocal coming to this council and saying, we've got a problem. It's a safety issue. It's a concern for businesses. It's a concern for the residents. This evening, we heard another resident saying that coffee, as I've heard it described, is turning into a similar situation. And strawberry blend has the, the earmarks of also doing it. So I think we, we hear a lot of the concerns in the numbered streets because it dead ends to the river. It's small, tight lots. I'm hearing that. And I think it's interesting to, to have folks open up that, oh, wow, you know, this isn't just the numbered street issue. This is a bigger issue within the entire city, and it's a little city and we're landlocked, right? So it's not, and one of my, my continued drumbeats is we don't have the luxury of Hyde Park where you drive around and look for another parking spot. You hit the river and then you're, you know, you, you're not driving around the block. You're doing a U-turn. And if you're doing a U-turn back up the street that has parking on both sides of the street, you're creating more safety issues, right? That's my perception. That, you know, that there are other areas, and I think the plantation folks make a good plea. I mean, if I were in plantation right now, I would be very concerned. There's possibility that's going to be high-density development there. And do we, in tandem, say, bring in high-density, reduce the, the required parking and assume that those existing residents aren't impacted by that? I think that's illogical, frankly. And one of my big considerations is property owners. The existing residents haven't a right to expect that we take their property value reasonably and help to protect that to reasonable extent. The other concern that I have is when we talk about a variety of housing, we still in Garden City, unless the numbers have changed radically, and I don't believe they have, right now, I think it's twenty-four point six percent of our housing is mobile homes or multifamily units. So I think we're, we're still covered. It's not to be insensitive to future development, but it, I don't think that we're dismissing or overlooking variety of housing, regardless of the direction we go. The other big concern that I have is, one, the development out of the, the fairgrounds and how that long-term impact. It will create more traffic. It will create a higher demand for parking. And we can't overlook that because I certainly expect within the next five to ten years, that's going to happen. That's going to become a reality. At the same time, and I apologize for being so long and appreciate everybody hanging with me. I don't see mass transit happening in the Treasure Valley. If we were to see that, I would say that would provide a, a release, a release valve that would help mitigate some of this. But Idaho's still a very rural state. We all know that. The Treasure Valley does not swing the legislature. It is, we are subject to Northern Idaho, Eastern Idaho, and those legislatures, unless you tell me differently, are not inclined to consider the needs of the Treasure Valley. They're far more focused, just as the, the governor indicated in his State of the State on infrastructure improvements so that their heavy equipment can move agriculture goods around. So, long, long way around the barn here, I think that there's enough unknowns and enough concerns regarding safety, property values, and movability within the city to seriously, I, I, I just find it very difficult to contemplate eliminating parking requirements, both commercially or residentially. And I will add, you know, interestingly enough, we were at lunch at Twi- Twisted District, and the proprietor there was complaining about parking because now the other businesses have filled in. Her parking is now limited. She gets frustrated with that. So it is beginning to happen. It is creating frustration, both for business, well, certainly for businesses and residents. And another consideration for me is when we have good residents and good businesses, we want them to stay. And so I think we need to help, like, address this and so that we retain good residents and businesses within Garden City. I understand the free market. I don't, I'm not inclined to say, hey, great, we love that you started a business here. You grew it, but now because we didn't consider that you would be attracting more businesses in your block and you cannot attract more consumers, so you now need to move out of Garden City. I don't think that should be a strategy. So there was one last comment that I, I did want to address, that being of car part, or carports. I don't think that's a solution that's gone away. You, if you drive down Adams, there's plenty of properties with carports. And it's an okay solution, but in most instances, now we have property owners' stuff out there that is visible from the street. So, you know, not dismissing, I appreciate, I sincerely appreciate all the creativity, all the observations and feedback. But that is some of my concerns and perspectives at this time.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Council President Page, I'll, I'll weigh in. I don't want to repeat anything that my fellow council members have said. I agree with almost everything I've heard. And I'm grateful to you, Theresa, for, Councilmember Theresa, for mentioning the fact that Garden City, City still has a lot of property that has occupancy by low income. I don't like using terms like middle class and lower class and the working class, but I'll talk about income levels and we have, we have a lot of property that has that appeal. I'm, I'm sensitive to the issues of traffic as well. That's, that's something I've spent a lot of time thinking about, particularly with your help in pointing out those issues that you see on a daily basis, I think, in terms of your, your location. I'm also sensitive to the possibility that code will have an impact on future developments, but my view is to, to wait and see when, when those things are in front of us, what, what options and possibilities we're looking at. I'll, I'll say this. I've been peppering Jenna's office, Jenna, with question after question after question regarding these code changes. And in every instance, she and her staff and, and Mr. Waddams and his staff have been very helpful in addressing my concerns, more my curiosities and, and my, my need for further education. And what it's convinced me is that there's a great deal of flexibility built into these code revisions, the new code, Ms. Thornborough, and we had a short talk about that before the meeting, in fact, today. So I'm, I'm not worried that we won't be able to accommodate serious concerns that were raised tonight that we may wonder how we'll feel about at the time we're, we're facing them. I, I think there is flexibility in the code. And I want to say more than that in terms of my sense of whether we've hit a sweet spot in reducing parking. If, if that is a sweet spot between eliminating parking restrictions and preserving the, the, the numbers we have in, in current code. But, but I do want to give a special thanks to your office, Jenna, for helping me.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Yes, go ahead.
I, I apologize for this follow-up, but there are, I, I would like the opportunity over the next couple of weeks to, to verify some of the numbers that have been presented here tonight independently. But regarding the code specifically, I do believe it should be simplified, that, that as it's proposed right now, it's, it's it could be, I, I hope it can be simplified so that anybody can pick it up, understand it, and quickly drive to what the requirements are. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you for asking, Council President Page. Okay. Counsel, I would entertain an action to continue the hearing contemplating further deliberation on February twenty seventh.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Okay, I'll second that. And a motion is second. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Counsel, let's take a short recess before we take up the rest of our agenda. So we'll reconvene here in at eight thirty. Thank you. I'm waiting for the magic words for.
It, it already said it.
Okay, we'll reconvene the meeting. It's eight, eight thirty-three. And the next item on our agenda is item G two. This is a resolution adopting our five-year work plan priorities.
And Mayor, members of the council, thank you. And this, this item is somewhat correlated to the last item. So I.
I've got to get you.
Talking in, okay. And thank you. And so every year, with the exception of last year, ACHD does request a list of transportation projects from the different jurisdictions that then they will take the city's rankings into consideration as they add projects to their five-year work plan, which is a, a rolling five-year plan that, that informs their overall budget. Last year, they did not ask for the city's, the jurisdictions' request list because they were revamping their process. But we're, we're back at it this year. And within Garden City, the Parks and Water Way Committee is tasked with making recommendations on right-of-way improvements as well. And they've made some recommendations for some updates to the, the requests. The requests are in two different formats. One is already programmed request, and then the other are the other prioritizations. The requests that are not programmed, and the Adams Allworth project was relocated to a number one priority with a special emphasis in looking at the intersections from VMP West to Forty-third Street. And also to include the police department's recommendations from the efforts that they did engaging with the businesses and schools at those intersections earlier this year. And then the Forty-Fifth Street improvements have been moved up to dovetail with potential private investments so that there could be public-private potential within those investments. For the programmed projects, Ustick remains the number one priority due to the fatalities that have occurred in the past at that location. But bicycle facilities on Forty-third Street, which would be the Ustick coming down off of the hill and related to the schools and Boys and Girls Club access, has been moved up on the list as well as bicycle facilities on forty, or excuse me, Thirty-third Street. And then hopefully, I know that they were tiny in the packet. You were able to zoom in and see where that left the ranking for both of those lists. And then there were some new items that were added to the list somewhat related to public comment. And so we received public comment both from Compass and ACHD. ACHD did open up a map for public comment where people could click on and write in what their concerns were. And the pedestrian amenities at Curtis and VMP were added but not ranked, as well as the crossing of State Street at Saxton. Really, it's staff's understanding that certainly the city can rank out every project, but the, that ACHD will be looking at really the first top ten, really the number one ranking, but the top ten. I would like to note that there was a request to, to, for ACHD to really look at their designs for existing right-of-way and what can be done there. Garden City has constrained right-of-way and it's already built out, built out. And so there's only fifty feet of right-of-way in most streets to deal with. So those are the bike lanes, those are the parking, the street trees to make it usable and user-friendly. Sidewalk, the whole shebang within that fifty-foot right-of-way. And so while they do have design standards in place, one of the requests is to look at those standards to see if they would fit in smaller, already-developed right-of-way. And one thing that I did want to note, based on the conversation that we just had, Garden City as a standard, and, and I didn't bring it before you just yet, updates and annual transportation needs list that is Garden City looking at everything ranging from ACHD right-of-way to the state right-of-way to transit needs and green belt and pathway connectivity. Within that document, it does talk about additional local road connections. And there are a number of reasons that it's stated within that document, last updated in twenty twenty-one. On the east end, the reasons that it's noted is there should be a potential for connections. One is because of what was brought up because of the dead-ending into the, the river and the lack of being able to connect. And that connectivity also is important for secondary fire access. And the more dense developments that we've seen, they've gotten creative and created that secondary access on the green belt rather than a through-street. Walkability and bikeability is another reason to break up those blocks because bicyclists and pedestrians tend to have a smaller length of area that they'll, they'll be willing to travel to get around. And so breaking up the blocks would assist in bikeability and walkability. This, this does not address those concerns. Your staff has met with ACHD staff. And some of the suggestions that they have are cross-access agreements, which would be very important for cars entering into arterial rights-of-way. For example, at, at stoplights to avoid the left-hand turns into each individual project or roads that may not have access. And another suggestion that they've had, because it would be very difficult to go back into already platted-out areas to create additional right-of-way connections, is maybe to try to identify one by one what might be possible to create the connections, particularly in the east end of town. I do want to note that Edinson Batista with ACHD. I do want to note that Edinson Batista with ACHD is online if there are any questions. As well as he's provided twenty twenty-two Garden City pro- projects that were done by ACHD as well as the impact fees that were collected, and that's part of the memorandum in your packet. And with that, I'll stop talking after we've already had a long evening. And Stanford questions?
Thank you. Are there questions for Jenna or Edison?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
First of all, I want to thank Chief Allen and ACHD and the efforts to address some immediate issues that we've encountered at Forty-second, Forty-third and listening to the businesses and the schools and figuring out a solution. I'm pleased to see that it was reported here in the packet and I applaud all those efforts and sincerely appreciate that. There's one other item that I would like to see get ranked somehow if the, the rest of the council agrees. And that is the, the traffic light Adams and Veterans Memorial Parkway heading east. And I believe we've discussed it previously, but I think it's time that as we continue to see the, the projects being completed, more traffic as we try to address the, the challenges that we're seeing at Forty-second and Forty-third. I think we really need to create a right-only turn and/or take the left-hand turn and make it a yield light rather than a dedicated left turn. So that would be my request and offer that up to the council if it's worthy for consideration.
Go ahead.
Would a motorist be able to travel directly east straight then?
That, that's my thinking, yes, is that you clear that intersection by allowing folks. First, the bottleneck is the right-hand turn because if there's any one car that needs to travel east, it holds up and backs up that traffic. Whereas if we release the, the right turn only, it would continue to clear because I believe most of that traffic is heading either north or south. Traffic eastward on Adams is fairly light. Likewise, I think traffic coming west on Adams through Veterans Memorial is also very light. So I think that the north turn would be little impact. And if we could again, clear that right-hand turn, allowing UPS, allowing Grasmit, allowing everybody to just turn and then move out of the way would reduce the backup in traffic there.
Okay, I think that's. I think Jenna, you can chime in. Edison, you can chime in as well. But I'm, I'm thinking, have we formally visited with the ACHD about that so their traffic engineers can take a specific look at that?
And Mayor, we have not formally visited with ACHD with that particular issue.
I think that would be the first step and I, I'm assuming there's no dissent on the council to asking them to take, take a look at that. Edison, are you taking notes there?
Mayor, Mayor, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Certainly, I'm taking notes and and I will take them back to the office certainly.
Okay, thank, thank you. Reese, I think we can just make contact with the ACHD staff and ask them to take a hard look at that because that's a one thing we, I, I heard as I observed all of you in the last meeting on the other issues you mentioned. Was a comment by an ACHD staffer who said, we hear a lot of complaints. We don't hear very many suggestions for a solution. So so we've got a complaint. We've got a suggestion for a solution. And if that, there's a protocol they have like they have for a lot of things that they review and that traffic gurus will will take a look at that. Because Edison's gonna ask us along.
And Mayor, if I may, that could also very easily be included in the Adams Allworth request, the number one request.
Okay. Well, why don't you do that?
Thank you.
Okay, with those modifications, the matter before us is Resolution eleven thirty-nine dash twenty-three.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we pass Resolution number eleven thirty-nine dash twenty-three, adopting the twenty twenty-three Garden City request to be included in the eighty-county Highway District Integration Five-Year Work Plan with the changes and suggestions mentioned herein today.
I'd second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next item on our agenda is Resolution eleven forty dash twenty-three relating to surplus of property. This is an item we deal with periodically to for departments to dispose of property that either, that has no value really to us. So council like a briefing on this? Are you ready to take an action?
Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
President of council is, are you okay with that or to allow some discussion?
Please do. I was scrambling to find my wording for that. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt Resolution one one four zero dash two three, a resolution relating to surplus property, declaring certain property of the city to be surplus, authorizing and directing the transfer disposal of the surplus property, providing related banners and writing an effective date.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes, thank you. Item G three, authorizing me to enter into a professional services agreement with Safebuilt LLC. This item was in your packet. This is a backup opportunity for plan reviews, inspections, a number of things that would aid our Development Services Department when needed. Jenna, add to that.
And Mayor, thank you. I, I do not have much to add. There is a proposed fee increase by, from Safebuilt for planning consultant fees that range between three and six dollars an hour depending on the type of review. So if it's a standard planner versus a senior planner. To date, Garden City hasn't utilized the planning services. However, there is a potential that we may need to be able to have some flexibility, say there's a staff member that may be out in the future. And then there is also the addition of plumbing and electrical inspection services. And these are services that haven't been offered to date through Safebuilt. And staff would suggest that we would utilize those services for commercial new builds. Because right now, the, the state is reviewing the trades permits for the commercial new build and they're not very comfortable doing those inspections on something that's been reviewed by another agency. And this would just allow that to be all in one spot.
Okay, any questions? Yes.
Jenna, our current fee schedule cover all of those fees appropriately?
And Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, I believe that that is something that Development Services Department needs to bring before you is a, a look at our fee schedule. It's, it's outdated at this point in time.
So so you're not, I guess the question is, is it, so we do approve these and we use these fees and we need to use them. So currently our fee schedule probably wouldn't cut adequately cover the cost?
Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, there is something within the current fee schedule that we rely on quite a bit. If costs won't be covered by our standard fee, there is something that says that we can cover costs.
Okay.
So we can at least cover the cost.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add one thing? Because I reviewed that contract and it's a standard boilerplate, boilerplate contract. But one thing it says is that I think this council can expect increases in the fee schedule annually. It says that every year it's going to be stuck tied to the Consumer Price Index. So if the CPI is going up, then they're going to be asking for more fees on the fee schedule. So just full disclosure to the council.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Waddams. My question and concern is along the same lines. And I just, I do not like seeing agreements that escalate or allow an escalate, an escalation not to exceed. Because every year it will be four percent, period. I mean, they're not going to, that if you allow that, it's going to come through. You know, my preference unless, you know, understanding that we haven't really leveraged this. But if we are moving towards leveraging this contract, I would prefer that, rather than an automatic escalation, that there be an opportunity to negotiate that.
Mr. Mayor? I haven't looked at the termination clause, but
I think it's a ninety day.
Ninety days, yeah. So we can for obvious reasons, I'm looking for some extended bandwidth. Yes, Councilmember Page.
Just a question for Mr. Waddams here. This looks a little bit like a contract of adhesion. Kind of take it or leave it.
Well, Council President, Mayor Council President, there, there has been no negotiation, at least not from your legal department. I, I usually, when I look at escalation clauses, I, I do like to see not to exceed in there. And I did not see a not to exceed in there. It says that if the CPI, CPI goes up every year, then we're going to ask for more fees from you. So so you're not to exceed a four percent?
Yeah.
So CPI is five, we're but if it's, but if it's, but if it's two point one, then it'd be two point one. They can't make it four if they tie it to the CPI. So is that the northwest version of the CPI?
Fair question.
I just wanted to make sure that council is aware that you, I would, I would put money on the fact that it's going to go up every year.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we aren't forever stuck with any, anything like this. We, we need some additional bandwidth. Particularly in the year coming up, starting
July.
Starting, well, probably a little before July.
It's going to be here before you.
Yeah. Absent that, I'll expect the council members to take shifts in there. Twelve-hour shifts.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we authorize you to enter into an amended professional services agreement with Safebuilt LLC.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
For clarity, Mr. Waddams, are you going to negotiate this?
I'm going to do whatever the mayor and council want me to do. I just didn't hear a clear direction on that. If you want me to go back to them and say, and try to negotiate that, I'd be happy to. If you want to just take it as written, understanding our current circumstance and then we're you know, next year, I can start the process for next year.
And there's a ninety-day cancellation.
There's a termination clause. I, I, I think I've just reviewed more. I think it's ninety days, but yeah, there's a reasonable termination.
As long as it's tied to a CPI, then well, maybe the date at which we determine when the renewal is, is important.
It's in there.
So Mr. Mayor, my, my ask would be that there's a little bit more clarity and that Mr. Waddams has the latitude to negotiate if he reasonably believes that needs to happen.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if I can get the, the council member who's seconded to withdraw their second, I would withdraw my motion in anticipation of an amended motion.
Okay, just, just enter a substitute motion. And if that passes, the first motion will die.
Oh, me? Whoopsie. I was waiting for you to do it. Sorry. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize yourself to enter into an amended professional service agreement with Safebuilt LLC pending potential negotiations by the city's attorney if deemed necessary by the city's attorney.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, G five, is the third reading of ordinance ten thirty-three dash twenty-two. Mr. Waddams?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Starting on page one sixty-four of your packet is my, the third rendition of my legal memo. A lot of it's just cut and paste from the two previous versions. I just wanted to draw your attention to a couple of things. And that is, well, starting on, I guess, page one sixty-six. Hold on, I'm looking at the wrong one.
I was going to say.
Yeah, hold on. I'm sorry. Strike that, wrong folder. Okay. But I do have a couple of things to say on this one too. So this one starts on page one thirty-five. Sorry about that. As with this, the previous version of this memo, I do, do, do go through the constitutional analysis. There has to be a nexus on all these kind of regulations on health and safety or some other government purpose. For the third reading, at the bottom of page one forty-seven, going to page one forty-eight, I talked about just a couple of things that I pointed out in my final review. I, you know, we do have a clear definition of what habitable space means. So that is good. The only question I had is regarding the word subordinate. And so if you look at the ordinance, and that starts on page one, on page one fifty-five, and on page one fifty-six, when you get into the definitions, specifically the definition of accessory structure and dwelling unit accessory, it just says words of subordinate. And I don't love that word subordinate, I think. But that word subordinate is supposed to mean a secondary. It's subordinate, subordinate to me has legal connotations. And so I, I would suggest instead of using the word subordinate to use the word secondary, I think that's easier to understand. It doesn't confuse legal terminology. Other than that, I think it's ready to go. And then again, if anybody had any questions about the de minimis changes between the second reading and the third reading, they're summarized on page one forty-seven and forty-eight. Other than that, I think it's good to go for the third reading. And remember, if you look at the agenda, it's real clear after the third reading, then there also has to be an approval of the, the decision document from the council. So I would request that you think about that subordinate wording and then, and then the council proceed further. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, to, just to add one, one item. Also in your packet is just a PowerPoint that shows different floor plans of different spark footages to address some of the, the questions that had come out, come about in the previous meetings.
Thank you for going on.
And Mr. Mayor, can I add one more thing? Do you see that there's a strike through on page one fifty-five? There's a strike through regarding manufactured mobile homes. I think I'd recommend that strike through. Because, you know, if the city wanted to prohibit manufactured mobile homes from being, from being used as an ADU while on a foundation, there would have to be a nexus to health and safety. And I know Chief Allen, if anybody had any questions on health and safety regarding those, Chief Allen's available, but I agree with that strike through. I, yeah, I don't think there's an access between health and safety and the manufactured mobile homes in this context.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask?
Sure.
Mr. Waddams, are you confident that design review and materials requirements are sufficient to not allow those structures?
Mayor, Councilmember Heller, I think that the, the findings that the code or that the council has just recently amended on design review, it requires that they have to be compatible. And I, I think, yes, if it doesn't look, if it doesn't look like the primary structure, the design review could reasonably deny it.
Thank you.
It's also, and for clarification, it's also directly in this code amendment as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
The word's compatible. It's on six.
So manufacturer homes are allowed as an ADU?
That's, as it's written currently, it's up to the council to make a policy decision, but that's what it's currently.
And Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, Mr. Waddams, as a point of clarification, so as long as it's on a foundation declared real property and compatible with the materials in the design of the principal structure.
And a secondary.
And a secondary, yes. Not subordinate. Presuming.
Okay, thank you.
So everybody good?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move for a, a third reading of ordinance ten thirty-three dash twenty-two. Um, I move for a, a third reading of ordinance ten thirty-three dash twenty-two, amending, the wording subordinate to secondary to relieve legal ambiguity and to intentionally strike through section eight, reference manufacturer mobile homes not permitted as an accessory dwelling unit.
By title only.
By title only, please. Thank you.
Second, got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yeah.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Third reading ordinance ten thirty-three dash twenty-two, an ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Garden City Code Title Eight Development Code, Chapter Two, Based Only District Regulations, Article C, Land Use Provisions, Section fourteen, Dwelling Units Accessory, Chapter seven, References, Article A, Definitions, Section two, Definitions of Terms by Amending the Language to Include Updated Standards for accessory dwelling units providing severability, repealing conflicting city code provisions, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, I move for approval of, uh, decision, uh, as amended CPA FY twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor, we need a motion to adopt and publish.
Before we do the. Do the adopt and publish next?
Thank you, adopt and publish, and then you go to six.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to adopt and publish, uh, ordinance ten thirty-three dash twenty-two.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Thank you. Uh, now we'll move to item G six, uh, council president Page.
Good catchers to all, thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, the decision as amended for file CPA FY twenty twenty-two dash zero 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 four, uh, accessory dwelling units.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, item G seven, this is another third reading for ordinance ten thirty dash twenty-two. Mr. Waddams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, briefly, um. My memo is on page one sixty-four of the packet. It's basically the same memo except for one or two things I wanted to highlight. On the last page of my memo, uh, that's on page one sixty-eight of your packet, I just talked about a couple, um, well, primarily just one change. Um, and it's really a clarification is that, uh, what the council is doing is like delegating the, the surety review. Because right now, sure, sureties have to go to the council and so it's delegating it to staff. Specifically, we put right in the resolution that we're delegating it to either the public works director or the development services director. And so that's the only staff, and they could, or they're designated, I suppose, but those, those would be the two people reviewing the sureties. It's either Ms. Thornborough or Mr. Schmidt and our city engineer, Mr. Canning may help out Mr. Schmidt from time to time as needed. But it's not any staff member that's looking at these things. It's either Jenna or it's Colin. So, uh, we, we narrowed the scope on that and clarified the scope on that. And, and I put it in my last paragraph that also the next thing, or it's coming down at some point in time, is this resolution to adopt this, uh, standard operating procedures. I've looked at the resolution, the resolution is fine. So I'm going to recommend that you do the third reading on this ordinance, um, adopt and publish. Uh, I'm going to recommend that you, uh, approve the decision document and I'm going to recommend that you adopt and approve the resolution eleven forty-one dash twenty-three. That's coming down on the agenda. Thank you.
Hey, any questions? Okay, let's pleasure the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move for a third reading of ordinance, uh, ten thirty dash twenty-two by title only.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Third reading ordinance ten thirty dash twenty-two, an ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending or repealing Garden City Code Title Eight Development Code, Chapter Five, Land Division Requirements, Article B, Subdivision Process, Section Seven, Guarantee of Completion of Improvements, repealing ordinance number eight nine eight dash zero eight in its entirety, repealing all ordinances, ordinances or parts thereof to the extent they conflict with this ordinance, providing all other ordinances included in the official code are still in effect, notwithstanding some provisions thereof being eliminated, amending Title Eight Development Code, Chapter Six Administration, Article A, General Provisions, Adding Section Fifteen, Financial Surety, the language to include updated provisions for sureties, providing severability, repealing conflicting city code provisions, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, yes, I move to adopt and publish ordinance ten thirty dash twenty-two.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yeah.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm, I'm for approval of decision file number CPA FY twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one, Financial Guarantees.
Second, got a motion and a second, is there a discussion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yeah.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, last piece of the trio, resolution eleven forty-one dash twenty-three. Council need further explanation from Mr. Waddams?
That agenda item is just what I mentioned. It's the adoptance of the procedure for column and general.
Right.
Uh, so clarification, this, um, provides for director level staff review or their designee.
Council president, it does, and it outlines the process for the public and the applicants, uh, what they need to do to get a surety.
Does it include a designee?
I do not include designee. I figured that we could just do that in this.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move, uh, for a third reading of resolution.
No.
Excuse me. I move to adopt resolution eleven forty-one dash twenty-three.
Second, we got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, um, item G ten, third reading on ordinance ten thirty-two dash twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my memo on this one starts on page one eighty-six of your packet, uh, just highlighting a couple of changes. Beginning on page one eighty-seven of your packet, I talk about, uh, whether this should be retroactive and, and of course, we're talking about the, the, the length of permits and the length of extensions for permits. And, uh, during the second reading, we kicked around whether this should be retroactive or not. I can, uh, tell the council that we've talked to the mayor about this and, um, the, the recommendation from staff at this point in time is that the ordinance should not be retroactive. And so what does that mean? Um, that means that if somebody has a pen, a, a current pending permit, that's the term, that's the length of the permit. It's not going to be a longer term of the permit. Uh, if, so if there's something, somebody that's already approved for six months, that's what they get, they get six months. And, um, and again, that's a policy question for the council, but staff is not recommending it be retroactive. Um, the, one thing I wanted to point out is there's a fifty percent threshold and I asked staff where this fifty percent threshold came, came around and it's on page one eighty-seven of my memo. And nobody knows where that fifty percent threshold came around. And what I'm referencing is, uh, if there have been code changes that, that affect the application, the permit may only be reactivated upon the payment of a fee totaling fifty percent of the permit fee that was established at the, the time of issuance. So I asked where that fifty percent came from. Nobody knows, I don't think. So the council could, uh, in the council's wise discretion, could change that to twenty-five percent or seventy-five percent or a hundred percent.
Mr. Mayor. Yes. Uh, Mr. Waddams, your, your final sentence in that paragraph is a fifty percent fee could be changed if appropriate.
That's appropriate.
So.
Right. Well, and, and, yeah, it, it says totaling fifty percent. So for, yeah, if you wanted to just say if appropriate.
Well, you do say that.
That's, wow.
I mean, you can, you can, I, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying that, that fifty, nobody knows where that fifty percent came from.
Right.
Um, and let's see here, that, no, let me, let me put this on the record because on page one eighty-seven, there are some terms that, um, seem a little bit subjective to me, terms like major change, actively pursuing and the city's best interest. You know, we've had a theme for the last six months to a year, trying to make everything objective. And I'm just simply pointing out that those terms are subject to interpretation and if the council's comfortable with them, then I'm comfortable with them. But, um, I could see somebody saying, well, what does major change mean? What does actively pursuing mean and what is the city's best interest?
I, right, that, if that occurs, I think we can tell.
There it is, so.
Counsel, I guess they interpret it's code. Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And there is an explanation, isn't there, Charles, down there? Uh, staff has advised that major change will be interpreted to mean one that would affect the project.
Right, that's how administratively, yeah, correct, councilmember Heller, that's how it's currently interpreted administratively, just not defined, so.
And then Mr. Waddams, my understanding is after that six month period, they have to, they're current on whatever code is current to get an extension.
Mayor, council member, uh, Jacobs, that's my understanding as well. Hopefully it is also just one of us.
Uh, Mayor, councilmember.
The parking code. They come up with that six months, they have to comply with the new parking code to get the next six month extension.
And Mayor, councilmember Jacobs, that's, that's my understanding as well because it does state within the ordinance, provided that there's no ordinance, uh, then no ordinance amendments, um.
You have any comments on this?
Um, Mayor, just as a point of clarification, uh, to the fifty percent, um, review fee, um, that would be presuming that there are no ordinance changes. And so hypothetically, those reviews would be fairly simple uh, to conduct. Um, however, we do see building reviews that range from, uh, one hundred dollars to building reviews that range far, far, far beyond one hundred dollars. And so that may be, if somebody with a larger project, uh, were to allow their permit to lapse, that may be, um, quite the fee that they would need to pay to reactivate.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Waddams, am I hearing you say that, um, perhaps ad hoc approval, um, of the, of the fee could be assigned at the time based on the scope of the extension?
Um, Mayor, uh, council president and Page, uh, uh, I don't know that ad hoc approval of the fee is, if it's, um, as drafted, it would be fifty percent if they've, um, allowed their permit to lapse and want to reactivate it. And then I don't think that there's guidance in this code for anything besides that fifty percent fee.
So the complication comes once the permit's lapsed.
Um, Mayor, council president, Page, that would be the complication.
You don't, you never want them to lapse. Some jurisdictions make you start over. So I think this is pretty generous, actually, if you may let one lapse. Responsibility, if you have a permit, to know when, when it lapses and to come in and seek an extension before it lapses, so. That's not on us, that's on the applicant. Personal opinion. Okay, any other questions? Okay, uh, Mr. Waddams, are we ready to proceed?
With those caveats, if the council is comfortable, I am comfortable. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
May I just poll the, um, my colleagues on council?
Sure.
Councilmember Heller, are you comfortable with the, um, the numbers and percentages as, as, as recommended here?
Council president Page, I am. I, I don't have a, a. I, I can't point to references that support that, that, um, they look reasonable to me.
Uh, do you wish to amend anything as written here?
Um, no.
That's not. Councilmember Jorgensen, do you wish to make an amendment to these, uh, recommendations that we've suggested?
Uh, president of the council, I, I find it acceptable as written.
Councilmember Jacobs, same question.
Yes, the one, the only one concern is that I don't know if it's, a concern is that major change definitions might be subjective. But it sounds like if, if we were interpreting it to mean one that would affect the project that's based on Garden City interpreting that, major change equals.
And councilmember Jacobs, it's, um, yeah.
That.
It's, it's my preference to leave, to leave that at the discretion of council as to what is, um, a major change, uh, and for future councils, rather than strictly define it.
I'm good.
With that, then, Mr. Mayor, um, I recommend a third reading by title only of ordinance, or I move for a, uh, third reading by title only of ordinance, ten thirty-two dash twenty-two.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing on the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Third reading ordinance ten thirty-two dash twenty-two, an ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Garden City Code Title Seven Building Code to amend the following provisions, Title Seven Building Regulations, Chapter One, Purpose and Administration, Section Five, Permit Time Limitation and Expiration, Section Seven, Permit Reactivation, Title Eight Development Code, Chapter Two, Based Only District Regulations, Article C, Land Use Provisions, Section Thirty-three, Recreational Vehicle Park, Chapter Four, Design and Development Regulations, Article F, Sign Provisions, Section Four, Permit Required, Chapter Five, Land Division Regulations, Article B, Subdivision Process, Section Six, Term of Permits, Chapter Six Administration, Article A, General Provisions, Section Eight, Expiration of Approvals, Article B, Specific Provisions, Section Two, Conditional Use by Amending the Language to Modify Provisions for Permit Extensions, Providing Severability, Repealing Conflicting City Code Provisions, Approving a Summary of the Ordinance and Providing an Effective Date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to adopt and publish ordinance ten thirty-two dash twenty-two.
Second, got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G eleven.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move for approval of decision file CPA FY twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 two.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, let the tie go to Jacobs. This time, uh, got a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing that clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next item, item G twelve. Uh, this allows me to enter into an agreement with Apex Excavation LLC not to replace, uh, some sewer main line on Forty-Fifth Street, not to exceed forty thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, any questions of our public works director regarding this item?
Mr. Mayor. It's always fun when Colin gets up because we're spending money.
Yep, yep, yep.
I have no questions, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Hey, let's pleasure the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve. This one, uh, we approve, uh, that we, uh, authorize you to enter into an agreement with Apex, uh, the Apex Excavation LLC for the replacement of fifty linear feet of sewer main line on Forty-Fifth Street for an amount not to exceed forty thousand five hundred dollars.
Second, thank you. I got a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, we need to have an executive session tonight. Uh, as detailed here. Charlie, do you think we need to allow ourselves to reconvene in case there's some decision to make?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think there's any decision to be made necessarily.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Information hurts.
Okay, all right. Uh, entertain a motion to move into executive sess- session in accordance with item code seventy-four two oh six, uh, one.
I still moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, we are now in executive session.
Chief, you want?